Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Alton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March twenty first, twenty twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams and you will automatically be placed in queue. Trustees, please remember to turn your mics on when you speak. And also, please remember, if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, your mics will be muted. Item one point one, land acknowledgement, opening prayer, Our Father and National Anthem. And I ask staff to start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Alton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Omnivores.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Boy, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father and the National Anthem?
I'd ask everyone to please join me in making the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Father, today we celebrate World Down Syndrome Day. May your blessings be showered upon those in our community with Down Syndrome today and every day. May they know the love and value they bring to our world, and may all of us recognize that they are created in your image. World Down Syndrome Day acknowledges and celebrates the value, achievements, contributions, and inclusion of all individuals with Down Syndrome. We thank you for their many and meaningful contributions in our schools, workplaces, community, and everything that they do to make our world a better place. Now, I'd ask you all to join me in saying, "Our Father." Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Now, please stand for our national anthem.
Oh, Canada! Our home and native land! True patriot love! In all of us command! With glory hearts we seek to fight! The true Lord, strong and free! From far and wide, O Canada! We stand on guard for thee! Far deep, our land! Glorious and free! O Canada! We stand on guard for thee! O Canada! We stand on guard for thee!
Thank you, trustee Boye. Our next item is motions arising from in-camera. We did not have any motions in the in-camera session that will require a vote in the public domain. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, additions or corrections to the agenda? And do trustees want to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? None? May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Trustee Agnew.
Moved by trustee Agnew, looking for a second, please. Seconded by trustee Murphy. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy. Uh, trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Chua. Trustee Boye.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
Trustee Carrabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
So, we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. The motion carries, the agenda is approved. Moving on to our next order of business, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? None? We shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item four point one, senior staff updates. Director Klein, would you like to please introduce the presentation?
Chair, I'd like to call upon our senior manager of human rights and equity to do the introduction.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair. So, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce you to Lena Sukap, who is our board's youth settlement worker with the Welcome Center. And she's here today to share highlights and successes about the Welcome Center. Lena has been with the board for a number of years, and she will share some of her own story and her journey with the board with us. And just wanted to highlight that she speaks multiple languages, including English, French, and Arabic. Thank you, Lena, and over to you.
Welcome, Lena.
I would like to ask you a favor to start to begin with. If you could all please close your eyes and imagine, and I want you to imagine yourself leaving your countries, coming to a new country, leaving behind your family, your friends, your possessions, your personal belongings, and coming to a new country. I want you to imagine yourself being a teacher, a doctor, a pharmacist, a lawyer, having to do credentials again. I want you to imagine yourself a refugee fleeing a country, leaving behind devastation and destruction. I want you to imagine yourself coming to a new country, need to find a house to live in, you need to register your children in school, you need to find a job, you need to provide for your basic needs, and you don't speak the language. What would you do? So, this is what at the Welcome Center, what we do. At the Welcome Center, which our program is funded by Immigration and Refugee and Citizenship Canada, we meet with newcomer families after registering their children at in-schools. So, the next step that they do is come to the Welcome Center for assessment. They need to have their children assessed for English and math, so that we would be able to provide, or school staff would provide, the best needs for their children, support ESL languages or other supports that the children need. So, when they come to the Welcome Center, we meet the families and we provide them with settlement workers, and we are a team of settlement workers. We have the Arabic, English, Spanish, and Chinese. So, and if other languages are needed, we provide interpreter services as well. So, when they come, the children are assessed, we meet with the parents, and we provide them with information, information about the education system in Canada, because it is quite different than the education system that they had back in their home countries. Often, families, they come back to us and they say, "Oh, our children did not learn anything at school." So, to start with, we try to give them information about the education system in Canada, how it is different than their, in their home countries. For example, "Oh, they haven't taken math the second semester," or "English in the second semester," and they do not understand that is happening. We give them, we try to tell them, educate them about, education is not, in Canada, is not about education by road. It is about learning and searching for information, because the information is there in front of them. But they have to learn the skills and tools for looking for this kind of information that they need to learn and succeed in school. We provide them with information. After the information, we have a needs assessment checklist. So, we start with their basic needs, with giving them some information about the region where they live in, and some information about their rights and their responsibilities. We check with them whether they have completed their important documents, like having a health card, SIN number, did they apply for their child tax benefit, or other benefits that they are entitled for, and how to apply for, where to apply for. We provide short-term counseling for adults as well. Also do community-building activities, because as I mentioned, most families who come, they have no family or friends, and they have no support system. So, what we try to do at the Welcome Center is build communities, and we encourage families to make new friends, to have new, to embrace their new home, Canada, and to overcome the challenges that they face as newcomers. We help them with their settlement needs. Also, we provide conversation circles for adults. We, first, we encourage parents to do language assessments for themselves, to help them, if they do not speak the language, to enroll at Thomas Merton Center, where they provide link and ESL classes. If they have good English level, they can have other courses at the Thomas Merton, at employment programs, or for high school students to pre-evaluate their credentials, so that they continue with their education. We provide interpretation and translation services at school. We work closely with principals, with VPs, with social workers, with CYCs, with ESL teachers. We work as cultural brokers between, and the link between the school staff and the families. We provide volunteer opportunities for students and for parents as well. We have Youth Leadership Program, and we have a program that is called "There to Lead", Youth to Youth Leadership Empowerment Program. We meet online every Tuesday night between four thirty and six o'clock, and we train the student to lead the sessions. We have a different facilitator once a week, or presenter once a week. We cover different topics. We talk about mental health, about the environment, about employment, about sexual harassment, about equity and inclusion, about embracing cultures, we, and other, many more topics. And we, we see how students evolve from being shy students who wouldn't want to turn their cameras on at the beginning, and how they engage, and how they become full of self-confidence and confidence, and they are amazing leaders. And I always tell them that you should be TV anchors. We have also provide opportunities for free March camps, summer camps, and we just finished our successful, it was extremely successful, March camp this year, and we were so happy to see the students from different schools meet, get to know each other, and different ethnicities. That was very nice to see with summer camps, March camps, and, and from the leadership program, we, we find leaders. And when we have activities at school, like in August, end of August, we have a program, a new program that is called "Embracing All," and that is "We All." It's for grade nine students starting school. We have an orientation day. It's two parts, the morning part is for students, and the afternoon part, it's for parents, to give them another orientation about education in Canada, about the services that are available in the community, and referrals. So, the first part, which is done by the students, they are the ones who are, who lead the session, who have icebreakers, they take the students, new students from the schools. So, they work as ambassadors to the students, and it serves the students, because most of the students that we work with, they are newcomers themselves, they are shy, not confident. So, we end up having, like, winning on both sides, because both of them build that sense of belonging and build their self-confidence. We have, we provide also information nights for adults as well on different topics. For example, how to write will, will writing, or how to do tax-free clinic, how about grants and bursaries, where to look for. We provide information on, on many, many subjects. And now that we have the service, online services, we're having a huge outcome. Before, when we used to have different nights at school, different schools, the outcome was not as much as we're having online. I can talk for a long, long, long time about all the services that we provide. I can keep on going, but I don't want to bore you. So... So, this is a small statistic about the numbers that we served in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two. We had around fourteen hundred new clients, six thousand returning clients, two hundred twelve group sessions, nine or four multilingual learners in the panel, and six, eight, three multilinguals in the secondary panel. And we also have students, high school students at Thomas Merton Center, that probably is not mentioned here, and, yep, so... And this is all. Thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, I would...
Thank you, Lena, for your presentations. Wonderful. I'm sure you're going to have lots of questions here, so hands are coming up, I can see that. But I do remember you talked about the building communities, there was a Christmas event, which I went to with the communities, a wonderful event, and yeah, thank you for that. So, with this, I'll open up the floor to trustees for, for comments, questions. First up is trustee O'Han Chenara, you have your hand up to the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chen. Ms. Arias, thank you very much for, again, reminding us of all the good work. I do have one question, and it comes from a favorite TV show that I have, it's called New Amsterdam. So, my question is, how can we help? What are things that we can do to help, to enrich this? Are there struggles that you're having? And really, you don't have to answer me right now, but we're here to help as trustees and all the good work that you're doing, and welcome.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, thank you for just offering that. It's a great support for us, because that's what we need. We, we work on your support. Our work is very rewarding, and we work, sometimes the principals at school, they say, "Oh, you, you work everything, you're a social worker." You wouldn't believe the families, the number of families who call us, just to, they need someone to talk to. And we provide that kind of support. We also provide crisis counseling support for parents. But knowing that you are there for us, that is very good and to have and to know. But if we need anything, I'm sure that we will be coming to you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Han Chenara.
Thank you. I just, one comment, when you had us close our eyes to imagine, I, I can't imagine, so that breaks my heart, so to be empathetic to that journey, you know, I'm trying to imagine that, and it almost brought me a tear in my eye, because that struggle would be something that I couldn't comprehend, but I, I know that my kids and some of my in-laws had that journey, and it was, it was a tough one. So, again, how can we help?
Thank you. I came to Canada fourteen years ago. I waited for my visa, and we came as skilled labors for six years. I, we prepared, my husband and I, we prepared a lot for this journey, for this new journey. And we were overqualified, our points. We thought that when we come here, it's going to be a piece of cake, it's going to be easy. We both had good experience in our own countries, and we have worked in English-speaking environment, so we didn't need to learn the language. My children were in an international school, and they, when we came, there was no assessment for the children, so they were, just went through the mainstream. They were actually in an IB school in, I'm originally from Jordan, and now I'm proud Canadian, but even being prepared for a long journey, and we were so excited to come, and my children's friend were looking forward to it. It was still a very hard adjustment. So, I, I can imagine, and this is, when families come to the Welcome Center, we feel with them, we feel the empathy, and we provide that kind of support, and we tell them that you're not alone, that we have been through that journey, and now we're standing independently on our feet and through that. So, that's what we, we provide with the family. Again, I'm sorry, I cannot think of anything right now, how you can help, but just knowing that having the support here, we, we can always know what we can, where we can go. As I said, it, it is not an easy journey, it's not, especially for those who do not speak the language. It is devastating.
Thank you. Trustee O'Han Chenara, when you said, "How can we help?" I almost saw principal Gino's hand go up there, but we'll go there some other time. Trustee Carrabella, you have the floor, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo that, to help, absolutely. And when I closed my eyes, I did have a tear, because I remember being a four-year-old, coming from Czechoslovakia, and I was thinking of my parents, so thank you for that, going back. I'm really impressed with the numbers that we saw on the slide there, and so how do you manage when you have a camp? Is it for the students that are with you, or you invite all past students? How does that work?
We usually provide, or the camp for newcomers students for youth, and we have a big number of international students as well. So, it is open for all students. So it is open for all students. When we advertise it, we advertise it in school. So we, we give equal opportunity for all students. But usually older students, they don't want to be involved, like they're, they're settled. They want to work, they wanna go out with their friends, they want to sleep in, so but uh we do lots and lots of calling parents because they don't want, most students. But we had amazing uh feedback this year and uh they were glad. They told us that they didn't want to join because I think the main thing is that they just want to sleep in and feel that.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up?
No, I don't have a follow-up. Continue, continue what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you for the presentation, it was great. Uh, my question is just, how do families hear about the Welcome Center? So are they referred by the school? Like, what's the process?
Usually, yes. Uh, they uh register their children uh in schools and then uh they are referred to us. There is a form, a flyer that they fill out and uh they refer to us. They cannot, in high school, students cannot start high school without being assessed. So the second step that they need to do is have language, English and math assessment. Uh, because in high school, they need to have, to know what level they're at to provide them whether, and this is another thing, we talk to parents about pathways. Uh, there's that academic, applied, other pathways. So um it, the, the pathway they choose, it depends on the results of the assessment. After that, they meet with guidance counselors uh and uh it's, it's always based upon the results of the assessment. Sometimes um word of mouth, so some families, sometimes families who transfer from other uh cities, like we have in Milton, a huge number of families are transferring from Mississauga or from Hamilton. So uh word of mouth, uh some families, they talk about services, about the services that we provided, about programs and they refer families to us or by, through ESL teachers who they, they feel that there is a need for us to connect with a family, for example, if they need financial assistance. We, we refer them to employment agencies. Help them with writing their resumes or, as I said, credentials because sometimes like doctors or teachers or uh they, they don't know where to start. So we help them, uh we guide them step by step what they need to do. And through that, sometimes we have, we receive phone calls from uh families who do not have children with our board. So we, we provide information and referrals.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, you have another question?
No, that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is uh trustee Kuzma, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. I had no idea of a lot of the things that you guys were doing, so I'm just so amazed by uh everything that you guys are doing. And in particular, the uh March break and summer camps, because I've gone through a million of those and I can say how important it is for getting people, uh meeting new people, uh building skills and just how amazing it is that we have that for those students who need in our board. So I just wanted to thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Kuzma, and now next by Shereignu, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Um, uh, I know I'm not alone in how people are thinking about how amazing it was, so thank you for all the great work you're doing. I do have a question and thank you for sharing the stats. So I do have a question as far as year over year. Are you seeing an increase of people coming through your program? Are you seeing it the same? Are you seeing it, like what do those patterns seem to look like with respect to the, the people that you're serving with the program?
Uh, what program are you talking about?
Sorry, I know there's a million, I'm so sorry, just in general, I know you have, you have so many programs. So in general, um, you know, the people that you have that are coming in through the Welcome Center, that are being referred to you, the families that are participating in one or more of the programs you offer, are you seeing that to be consistent over year to year or are you seeing a growth in that? Um, so what do those numbers look like?
It's like, as I said, um, sometimes uh word of mouth. So when uh families, neighbors, they talk about the services that we provide, it's all, they, they refer families to us. And we become their lifeline, so uh they, they come back. They, we gain their confidence and uh we provide that kind of support. So when they have that confidence, they feel confident in referring our program and our services to other families. Uh, we have, yes, we see increase and as I, as I mentioned, the, we started the Dare to Lead program, for example. Uh, we, we used to have it before COVID, we used to have it at different locations in schools. So I used to go from ESL uh classes or sending students emails, reminders all the time. Okay, we're meeting today, we were providing pizza and like incentives, volunteer hours. Uh, but now, um, because of COVID, COVID has some good qualities. So we, we're having a good number of students and students are the ones, we usually promote this program through parents and we talk to parents, we told, we tell them about the amazing program that we have so that then they go to their children and talk about it. But uh that's how it usually works, but uh summer camps, March camp as well. But now we're seeing that students themselves are inviting their friends to join the program, so.
You know, you're, I mean, you're changing lives, so um for the better and, and so thank you, thank you for all of the work that you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's, it sounds tremendous, so thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands up here, so a few of us, few of our trustees had the opportunity to come and visit the, one of the centers that we have, Thomas Merton in, in Milton. Uh, and it was a great experience, we learned a lot, tons of programs, it's talked about. And we have seen the good work that you've been doing with uh newcomers, counseling services, youth, youth and settlement program services and so trusted, this is a hidden gem that we have. Um, in our board, we have two of them and we look forward to visiting uh with all trustees, visiting the center again. So uh Director Klein, Principal Gino, um Lena, thank you so much for coming and presenting. Thank you to our staff and the amazing work we do in the background. We don't see that, but it's, it's great news and great story. So thank you once again for coming here.
Thank you for having me tonight, thank you.
Moving on to our next order of business, which is item number five, delegations to the board. We do not have any delegations. Our next order of business is consent agenda items. Uh, following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Item six point one, action item. Uh, six point one one is the approval of the minutes, which is minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular board meeting. And then we have one noted item, uh there will be a single motion to approve the action item, uh which is one, and there will be no discussions. Uh, there'll be no discussions on the noted item two. Uh, I will read the motion uh now. Resolve that the Holden Catholic District School Board approve the consent agenda items six point one point one on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three as submitted. Uh, may I ask for a mover, please? Trustee Murphy, looking for a secondar.
A secondar.
Uh, trustee Powell, I shall take this to a recorded vote. Uh, trustee Owen Chanara? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Uh, in favor.
Trustee Chura?
In favor.
Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
And trustee Kennedy. Eight in favor and none opposed, no abstention, the consent agenda item carries.
Uh, sorry, Chair, may I have a question? Could I ask a question?
Uh, is it related to the motion?
Yes, it is.
No, the motion has passed, like.
Oh, no, no, I just, I just wanted to ask uh, uh, about uh the stuff of the consent agenda, when it's, when it's issues brought forward from a previous meeting, when we're consenting, what does that mean?
So, there are a couple of items here which we have agreed as a board of trustees to put it in consent agenda and agree that it's, uh, it's agreed upon and be, it's correct. So we divided that into two parts. One is the action items, which needs a vote and one is the uh items like business arising from previous meetings that we know that items are pending uh or, or some other items, uh which information items could be there.
So is that just means issues we discussed before that are still ongoing and then, and then?
Business arising?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So those are items which are, which the board, the board has agreed that it's, they come through a motion.
Yep.
Uh, which goes into that chart and it's being acted upon. So it will come back to the board at some point in time as a report or as an action.
Okay.
Thank you. So we are not wording on those items.
No, it's not a finish.
That's why it's under noted items.
Mr. Chair, what about other items?
Another question?
Yes, what about other items like last week, last meeting, we discussed summer school, whether it's in person or online? Where would that come up to be updated upon?
Okay, just to clarify, items under this summary of outstanding items, if it's an action item or it's a decision of the collective board to put it into that, then it would go there. Now, if you ask the question about summer school, that's a question, that doesn't come out of a report, so it won't go there.
Will there be an update on that somewhere?
So when the director presents the report, that's your opportunity to ask those questions. Okay, thank you, trustees. Uh, we shall now move on to the next order of business, which is, we'll skip the approval of the minutes because it's approved, business arising from previous meetings, we agreed upon that. Uh, next order of business is item number nine, which is action items. Nine point one, potential enhancement to reduce risk management. Trustee Owen Chanara, could you please read the motion?
Thank you, I will. Uh, whereas the Holden Catholic District School Board is committed to the safety of their staff and students and safeguarding property and assets. Whereas the incidences of crime have increased by thirty percent in two thousand twenty-two within Holden, as per a recent report by HRPS. Whereas risk management is responsible of the Holden Catholic District School Board. Be resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board instruct the Director of Education to bring forth a report to the board indicating any potential enhancements to our risk management system for elementary schools and their corresponding cost evaluation to the board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, trustee Owen Chanara. The motion is in order, I'll place it on the table. The motion is moved by trustee Owen Chanara. Let me ask for a secondar, we have trustee uh Agnew. Trustee Owen Chanara, you have five minutes to open up discussion and let me see if Parliament Kupur is ready. You have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't think I'll need five minutes. Um, so really, fellow trustees, um, what I'm looking at here is just going through the Director of Education for a report. It's organic, I don't know if organic and motion can go in the same sentence, but it's really to come back to us again to say, are there any enhancements that we need or we could have or we potentially could have at our elementary schools just to increase our risk management uh for our property and our people? So I'm really just looking for the staff to come back to report, what things can we do to enhance our current safe schools? Um, and then how much would it cost and then us as a board, we could decide whether we can afford to pay for it or other priorities, et cetera, et cetera. So that's really what I'm looking for, for our staff to come back with a report to us again, I hate to use this, but how can we help?
Thank you, trustee Owen Chanara. That was a short explanation, but uh shall now open up the floor to trustees for uh trustees, uh opening up the floor to trustees for questions. Uh, first up is uh trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr.
Oh, sorry, before I jump there, so this is an action item, so this is broken up into two parts. One is question time and one is debate.
Question.
So question time is open now and we shall have, how many, how many minutes do we have, Parliament Kupur?
This is a quick one.
Three minutes for your questions, the timer starts now.
Um, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, um, why specifically elementary schools and not just all schools?
Thank you, uh trustee Owen Chanara.
Uh, really, thank you for that question through you, Mr. Chair. Really, my thought process there was, let's just take, I hate to use this analogy, but you can't eat an elephant, you have to eat an elephant one bite at a time. So let's just take our elementary schools uh first and see what kind of enhancements and maybe it will water cascade into our secondary schools.
Thank you, trustee Murphy, your next question?
That's, that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we do not see any other hands up, trustees, do you have questions? Uh, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'd like to know what currently we have as uh safety measures that uh we're, we're following and um, that's right.
Uh, Director Klein, can I pass this to Superintendent Merrick? You would like to start off?
Uh, Chair, I can start off, certainly saying that's a, that, that's a question worth a report in itself in terms of the breadth and depth of the measures that are taken with regard to, I'm just looking over it again, safety, it's such a broad thing, is safety and uh of staff and students and property and assets. It would run the gamut of uh work that we do in terms of uh our emergency procedures, in terms of our uh protocols with the fire services. Um, it would look at the uh, the services that we retain in terms of security with nighttime patrols and stuff like that with regard to our uh work to ensure that we have our alarm systems and uh cameras in certain cases with certain conditions placed. But I will be more than happy to look over at uh Superintendent Merrick and uh turn the mic over to him.
Thank you. Uh, and through you, Mr. Chair, like, I, I, I think I'd be looking to trustees even for more clarity on what they're looking for in this report because, I mean, risk management is a very large topic. It could be, you know, privacy of information online, like i- i- it is extremely broad uh the way this motion is stated and we want to make sure we're directing a report, answering the questions that you have. So uh I, I, I think I'd put it back to trustees, ask them what they're looking for. Is it physical measures in the building, is it procedural measures, policy measures? Um, you know, is it fire safety plans, lockdown, hold and secure, that kind of thing? Or is it, uh, are we talking purely about physical measures in the building? So, or, or training even, yeah, even educating our, our staff? So I'm, yeah, I, I, I'd look to your guidance on that as to what you want to see in the report so we can focus on that when we, uh, when we take this work away.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I'm gonna pass this to trustee Owen Chanara.
Thank you. Thank you for that question to Superintendent Merrick and trustee Carabella. Really, my thought process here is, you know, and I'm gonna lob it back to you as the expert, uh, the priorities as far as our risk management is concerned, whether it's people or property, what you feel are the prioritized enhancements that we need to see as a board of trustees so we can assist, a vote on it, et cetera, et cetera. So unfortunately, I'm gonna have to lob it back to you as far as the top priorities that we feel are necessary to discuss in this report. That's what I'm looking at, I'm kind of looking at current state versus future state and give us what the top priorities are that you consider that we need to enhance in our elementary schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Does it help you?
Yeah, well, I, I have to take it away with my team then and, and I think it's way beyond just my team as well. It's gonna be, safe schools is gonna be with principals as well, so like, like, you know, my, my team doesn't operate the schools on a day-to-day basis, so I want to hear what they have to say as well. April eighteenth is fairly soon, uh, what I, you know, I, I could take it away, start talking with some people and see if April eighteenth is feasible and then report back to the board. If it's not feasible, I could report back to the board about, you know, what, what may be a, a, a different or a more feasible date. But um, we can start with that, but I think it's way beyond my team, I'm gonna need some help from my, from my colleagues here as well, so.
Man, and thank you through that, that's why, no disrespect, but it was to, to Director Klein so he can cascade to the departments that he feels need to be involved in this report. It wasn't specifically to facilities because I know that, you know, Superintendent Law says IT, right? So, so it's really to cascade to the departments that we feel, I mean, hard, it, to me, April eighteenth isn't a hard date if we want to push it to the next meeting. I, just to give you some time and some value add, I, I'm fine with that. So I don't know, we can make a, we can, we make a friendly amendment to the next board meeting and I don't have that at the top of my head.
Uh, what's the next board meeting date? The following one after that, May second? Uh, trustee Owen Chanara, are you talking about May second, is that a okay date for you?
I'm completely fine with May second to make a friendly amendment to my own motion, if that will.
Let's check with Superintendent Merrick if that's gonna help him, Superintendent Merrick?
Well, it's gonna be to Director Klein, no, no disrespect because it's multiple departments.
Director Klein.
Yeah, Chair, no, uh, no disrespect taken at all. I understand that the sentiment of this is to try and get a sense of what the top priorities are for us because we're all co-parenting a few thousand children, right? And I think all of us as co-parents lie awake at night worried about, and it's never safe enough. It's never safe enough as uh, as trustees or as leaders or as staff in the board. So I take it in terms of its sentiment and it's uh, at the heart of it, which is, can we as a senior team um discuss and try and come up with what we see as priority areas in terms of risk uh in that broad sense? And then come back to you and say, these are the things that we see as, not withstanding the fact that, you know, pandemics hit out of the blue and things that we can't predict, but based on our understanding, what would we see as the priorities? And in terms of what trustees can do, um, I think we'd have a, we'd be more than happy to uh proffer some form of uh uh requests for that. Does that make sense?
Sure, so is May second good?
I think May second is good for that.
Okay.
For Ryan to do that.
Thank you, Director Klein. So with that, I shall go around the table and see if there's appetite for changing a date from April eighteenth to May second. Can, can we have the? April eighteenth to May second, can, can we have the uh, okay, let's go around the table and see if we have unanimous consent first, then we'll go and change the motion. So trustee Carabella, you okay with changing the date?
Yes.
Trustee Powell, uh, trustee Kennedy, uh, trustee Chu, I missed you, sorry. Okay, uh, Vice Chair Agnew? Uh, trustee Boy? Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Uh, Kuzma, uh, you okay, and trustee Kelly? Yeah, so trustee Ohan Chanara, it looks like we have unanimous consent. Uh, so can we change the date, the motion that we see on screen, from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to May, to May second, let's give it a second. So while, while the date is being changed, we have unanimous consent, uh, we shall go to the speakers list, we have trustee Carabella, uh, Vice Chair Agnew and trustee uh Kennedy, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, so my follow-up question, and that's why I brought this forward, this question, because um, I was looking at your crime rate that you said it increased by thirty percent. So I was trying to think that this motion was like against potential crimes. So with that, we'd be looking at like vandalism against our schools or like what, what crimes were um, like sort of what, what are we looking at to enhance um safety, yes, but also like for, I guess, against crimes, it's.
Thank you, uh, pass you, pass it to trustee Ohan Chanara.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Carabella, really, again, what I'm thinking of is enhancement, so it can encompass, risk management is people, property, really, everything uh that we could, we see is at risk. I am not a risk management expert, so to answer that question specifically would be folly. So again, that's why the report will come to us with the priorities that our experts here at our board uh would think that we need to address, and then we can take it from there.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, your next question?
That was my follow-up, so I have another question, but another person.
You have three minutes.
Oh, I just keep going? Okay, so then, um, does the ministry assign certain safety standards and then each board would then augment as they see fit for their situation? And is there funding for that?
Director Klein, can we get some clarification from this?
Uh, Chair, I can, I can certainly start, again, a, a broad question deserves a broad answer. Uh, the answer would be yes, but it depends, so I would assume either the ministry and, it's different ministries involved in terms of safety, sometimes it's labor, sometimes it's environment, sometimes it's Ministry of Education. So the answer is depending on what the um, the risk is or the perceived risk is, uh, there would be certainly some form of guidelines on that. Um, give me the example, I maybe, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Merrick again, because I know certainly within facilities, there are all sorts of sounds awful to say, potential risks.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, something like the fire code would be one, where there's certain equipment required in a building in case of a fire, uh, certain procedures, some inspections that have to take place in a building. So there's a very detailed fire code, very specific that you, things you must meet in every building based on occupancy. Um, things like security cameras, though, that you don't have to have them, you may want to have them, but you don't have to have them, so um, some things are, you know, maybe good things to have, other things will be things you must have, and yeah, and there's, yeah. That runs from internet security to fire security to training and, and down the list, so there's lots of different things to consider in there, having appropriate policies and procedures in place to manage that. Yeah, there's, yeah, so i- it is very, very broad, so, yes.
Just Careful, your next question.
And then just that part of my question was, does the government provide or the ministry, whichever one, specific funding for those purposes, or we take it out of our budget?
Director Klein?
Well, it, it, sorry. Chair, the answer to that again is, is varied, so for instance, when it comes to things that are more um, uh optional for, for boards than they are paying, there have been in the past opportu- uh, funds that are sort of one-time-only funds, I think years ago, there was funding for things like cameras and stuff like that, and then that, that dries up. So when I think the government sees it might have monies that would uh um somehow address those priorities, they might be there, but, you know, the Lord giveth, the Lord taketh. And then what would also happen then would be, it would have to be bolstered by um uh, by boards, but in some other areas, there is, there is funding there.
Mr. Carabella, any more questions?
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, uh, next up, we have uh Vice Chair Agnew, and this is question time.
Uh, so thank you, just a, a clarification, so with this report, and I'm, I'm clear um after some discussion, clear on sort of the intent behind what the information is that you're looking for, so again, looking for staff to identify potential gaps as we're looking forward and, and recognizing we've had some of these increased incidences. Um, are we looking for cost estimates with those as well? Are we, um, like, are we looking for a report that says, here's the top fifteen things that we think that we need in the immediate or the long-term, whatever that might be, and then here's the cost associated with that? Is that something that we're also looking to have as part of this? Or is it just simply identifying potential gaps or improvements that might be available or necessary?
Trustee Ohan Chanara.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew, no, absolutely, cost benefit analysis will have to come to the board, so we can decide based upon the priority, how much does it cost, right? That's always, there's always a bottom line there, uh, so cost absolutely involved, yep.
Vice Chair.
Yep, just need clarity, thank you very much.
Thank you, next up, the four questions, we have trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, so I did look at some of the data too, so crime is up thirty-one, thirty percent in Halton, um, which is, which is not great, um, but they did say that crime in Halton has been falling since nineteen seventy-four and over the past decade. And of the Big Twelve communities in Ontario, Halton is the, by far the lowest severity of crime, when looked at on a weighted index. My question is about crime at our facilities and our schools. Do we have data on if, so it went up thirty percent in Halton? Has crime increased at our facilities and our schools, because a lot of the crimes I'm seeing that have increased have been like robberies and car thefts. So have we seen an increase in crime at our schools to make sense for us to continue with?
Director Klein?
Thank you, Chair, um, well said, in terms of, what I'm taking from this too is, as Dr. Collmore and her team will, will remind us in a little while, you know, statistics are things we have to look at very carefully, what do we mean by thirty percent? What is it in terms of the long term and what exactly are the uh, the trends in terms of specific crimes? We do know about carjacking and other things, likely those aren't big issues on the average elementary school, but um, I think we would need to look at it in a more fulsome way, we do have statistics in terms of uh, of that, I don't have them at the, the tip of my uh, tongue, but I think uh Superintendent Cordero might have some of those, or, or we'd be able to access them, but we do have um uh, statistics that show anything in terms of uh crime, and I know with uh uh Superintendent Merrick, the uh usually nighttime activities of uh vandals or, or thieves is something that he would have uh recorded as well.
Uh, trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, I just propose it might be a good idea to get some of those numbers first to see if we, we are doing a good job in is crime increasing where we're concerned, at our schools and our facilities, we know it's increasing in Halton? And if it is, then, like, I trust Superintendent Merrick is on top of these things, and then we could proceed from there. But if it's decreasing here, then I think we might be.
Thank you, I think that's going to come out, trustee Kennedy, from this uh, report that is being sought. Uh, that, that would be looking at the system that we have right now and finding the gaps in there, if at all, and trying to suggest, make suggestions on how to enhance uh and to enhance what we have right now. Trustee, uh, Ohan Chanara, am I right?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, trustee Kennedy, valid points there, and I respect that, I think I was coming more at it when I read the, the headlines, it was more, and that's why I use the word enhancement. I, I'm not saying at any stretch of the imagination our schools are unsafe, I'm saying they're locked down pretty solid, but what else can we do to avoid having a statistic, right? We won't even know what we've saved, because it won't occur if we provide some sort of enhancement, but I don't know what the cake is, it hasn't been baked yet. I'm just looking for the recipe and what, what options do we have, can we afford them, et cetera, et cetera, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
Thank you, uh, trustee Kennedy, any further questions?
Just use the analogy, I'm just looking to see if the ingredients are out of whack, before we do a survey and bake the cake. Do we have an issue, and then we proceed with, that's what I was thinking, but, that's good.
Thank you, trustees, uh, with that, uh, we have completed question time, I shall now open up the floor for debate, and we have uh, Vice Chair Agnew, your hand is up, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and, and not a debate, I don't want it to phrase it out as debate at all, but I just um, think I was listening to uh trustee Kennedy, and again, very valid points, and I think the way I looked at this as well was, um, while crime has been mentioned here, I also thought about it just strictly again from a safety perspective. Um, and, you know, we, we have seen, I don't know about everybody, but we have seen some increased incidences in our schools, we get emails about them, we do get some concerns about them. Um, but just, you know, it could be anything, as you were talking earlier about the various departments involved, so it could be anything in an increase in cyberbullying, it could be an increase in threats that are coming to the school, it could be an increase in physical, so I think I looked at it, certainly that piece about the crime. Um, but I also looked at it just as far as safety concerns that may exist in our school, and I don't know, again, if that was the spirit of what you were thinking, um, trustee Ohan Chanara, but that's sort of where my mind went with it, was just looking at the overall safety, um, you know, in our schools, so, just a comment.
Thank you, uh, trustees, do we have any further questions? Uh, are we, we are open up a debate, sorry, not questions. Uh, any other hands up, uh, no other hands up here, so, uh, with that, trustee, oh, trustee Carabella, you have uh, the floor for debate.
I would just like clarity on, on what trustee Kennedy was asking for, will that be included in the report?
I think, I think we have passed the question time.
Okay.
We are in debate time now, so if you want to reframe uh a question in a debate form, that's, okay. Okay, so seeing none, I shall now hand the floor to trustee Ohan Chanara to close discussion, and then I shall call the board.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and fellow trustees, and anyone else who's listening or wants to listen to this, um, it's not lost on me, I, I don't, and my track record is not to ask for a report, just ask for a report. Um, usually there are very valuable nuggets in a report that we could use, and, and when we're talking risk management, and again, I want to reiterate, I am not saying that we're not unsafe, so I don't want any soundbites coming out of here saying trustee Ohan Chanara says our schools are unsafe. That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying we're here to help, we are here to govern and to make sure that our board has the tools they need to do their job effectively and value-added, so I appreciate the support in this motion, uh, we're going to get a report at that time, we, we can decide what uh nuggets are in there or not, we may not be able to afford anything, we'll have to wait and see. Um, so I would appreciate your support in putting forth and approving this motion.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara, and with that, I shall call the vote on the motion you see in front of you on the screen. It was moved by trustee Ohan Chanara, seconded by uh trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, how do you vote?
Uh, in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Sorry. Uh, trustee, uh, Chu?
In favor.
Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? Okay. Trustee Ohan, trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention, the motion carries. Shall now move on to the next item, so the notice of motion under the past board meeting, item nine point two, green energy funding. Uh, this is a motion by trustee, student trustee Chu, brought forth by trustee Powell, trustee Powell? You have the floor.
Um, actually, we would like to withdraw this for now.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Powell, since uh you have your decision to withdraw, I shall uh withdraw it from um this, I shall withdraw this item and we shall move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Thank you, yes. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is staff reports, we have no reports tonight. Uh, our next item is information items, item eleven point one, student trustee update, student trustees, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I will be um covering the achieving section of our student trustee report tonight. So on Wednesday, March eighth, we had a follow-up consultation with student council leaders from all across our board regarding student governance and best practices. We received some very interesting feedback, and we look forward to our next meeting on Wednesday, April fifth, here at the C Catholic Education Center. Next Senate meeting will be held on March twenty-seventh at Corpus Christi, and we look forward to having our first meeting in almost two months away from each other, with Seda and the team from the Human Rights and Equity as guests.
And I'll be saying the believing section, so uh the H C C F, twenty-four hour fast, it is fast approaching. And the Catholic Faith and Action Subcommittee has continued to promote the event through social media posts, and in addition, the student trustees are excited to participate as well.
Thank you, and I'll be doing, doing belonging, um, we did do a report right before March break, so it's been a bit of a slow week for us. So nice and short and sweet this week. Um, but as part of our work uh on the Beling Prevention Intervention Committee, uh student trustee Chu and I had a follow-up meeting right before March break, and we're excited as student trustees to be planning a strategy for peer-to-peer mentorship among secondary and elementary students and a model for that for next year. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, student trustees, uh, trustees, do we have any questions for our students? I see trustee Murphy, you have your hand up, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I uh threw you to um trustee Bo, I just have a question about your peer-to-peer mentorship program, it sounds really great. More information?
Boy?
Sure, um, this is a project um and something that's been floating around, uh, at least for as long as I've been in my position as student trustee. Um, and the idea is sort of to connect secondary and elementary students on a particular topic, in this case, bullying prevention intervention. So we'd have a, a model for secondary students, likely student senators, to be able to go in and, and run mentorship and leadership programs with our elementary panel.
Thank you, trustee Murphy, any clarification?
Yeah, just to clarify, so you'd be going into the elementary schools, is that how it would work?
Not necessarily the student trustees ourselves, um, but senators as a whole, yeah.
Thank you, I do not see any other hands up, so thank you, student trustees for presenting your report, and we shall move on to the next item, eleven point two, directors' report, director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. The director's report, again, echoing what uh our student trustees have said, it seems like it was a week ago, which, if you add March break, it was a week ago that we did a a director's report, but I think what we have before us is a nice uh set of highlights of what has uh come before us, certainly in the last month, February onward, and a few highlights of events that are going to occur between now and the end of uh June. Um, under the pillars of achieving, believing and belonging, we will look at esports tournament, uh, S I A technology showcase, STEAM showcase, student awards of excellence, uh Catholic Education Week, which is coming up very quickly. Um, a high, a, a bit of a, a brief highlight in terms of the consultation sessions for Black families and staff, um, and Project Search. Next week, next Monday, Halton Catholic Athletic Association will hold an esports tournament at Notre Dame Catholic Secondary School, certainly nothing you would have seen ten years ago or well beyond uh would uh lead you to believe that we would be doing this, and yet, here we are. And we know that this is something that addresses the uh passions and the desires and the skills of many uh students in our board. So esports presents an opportunity for students to collaborate through shared passion for gaming, competition, desire to develop digital skills in a rapidly changing uh industry and, and world. Uh, scholastic esports as well as a structured approach to teaching students about teamwork, collaboration, accountability, responsibility, et cetera, it really hearkens to the uh pretty basic tenet of teaching, which is teach them where they are, teach them uh in terms of their own passions and move them in through that doorway and they can learn so many other things. I think as parents, sometimes we see our kids engaging in this, and you don't realize all the skills, uh, not just in terms of digital skills themselves, uh, but in terms of um uh teamwork and others as well that are developed through it. Uh, S I A technology showcase, for many of you who have been part of S I A C or anyone who has uh interest in and understanding of some of our special education um uh areas, we know that S I A is a very important part of the life and the response for students who have high needs, not all, but some. Uh, on Wednesday, June the seventh, so that's quite a ways off, Special Education Services will host the annual S I A Technology Showcase Evening, and that is at Corpus Christi, a Catholic secondary school in uh Burlington. The event will highlight this year's student recipients of the Ignite Technology Grants, will also provide an opportunity for parents and guardians to learn more about the benefits of special education assistive technology in education. Many of you know that is a uh, a growing um and uh consistently and continually developing a technology. Uh, if you think about what students have had for a voice to, voice to print or print to voice, or other ones that help uh students gain mobility, um, it, it develops a constant consistently, and um, there are funds that are provided through the province for that to help um all our learners, it's, it's phenomenal. And liberating when parents see that this is something that will help uh a child attain a fullness and freedom. The STEAM showcase has been something that was in the past, was a few STEAM showcase has been something that was in the past, it was a few weeks ago. Again, doesn't seem that long ago, but March eighth was when some of us in this room found ourselves at St. Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School. And the STEAM innovation showcase was, was phenomenal in the sense it was a beautiful sunny day. The joy was apparent, the, the passion was amazing. And the, anyone who is a part of that in our board was there, including many from elementary schools. And it was good for elementary students even to see, you know, beyond the big walls of a high school, what life is like for them in that, in that realm. The event featured representation from many of our schools and highlighted STEAM clubs across the district. First Robotics, student projects and entrepreneurship presentations were there as well. And there's some photos and there was lots of tweets. Many here, yours truly included, that came during it and after it. Student Awards of Excellence is another event that will occur a, a week or less than a week, six days from now. And that will take place on, again, the twenty seventh. We've done this over the, over the years. My understanding is that that was often something that was done later in the year. But because the bishop is at the heart of this, his schedule is one where we were able to get him for this date on March twenty seventh. And it is, of course, an annual event. It's been virtual over the last few years, of course, but not this coming year. And it's one where we celebrate students from each of our, each of our schools. It's a night of celebration, a night of honoring and a night of joy. And we started off with, of course, with the celebration of mass. The event will begin at six P M. And again, Bishop Crosby will be there to lead us in the mass. The award ceremony will commence at seven thirty in the theater. And each of the school's recipients will be recognized individually and receive a certificate and medal. I would like to say that this is something too that on the staff here has just taken up with great passion and organization and energy. It has been something that sort of started off with a blank slate and now it is, you see it through the meetings to something that's getting more and more organized and more and more, I think, consistent for students, should be a night of great, a great joy. And Spirit of Inclusion Award recipients will also be recognized at that. Catholic Education Week, I think, is something that we sometimes overlook or underlook as the years go on. It's been around for many years and it is certainly something that I, I think Catholic schools in the province tend to celebrate more than, and more and more every year. And it will be this, the last couple of days of April and into, into May. The theme of this year is Catholic education. We are many, we are one. So celebrating that sense of diversity and yet unity, right? That I think Santa Gesto talks about in terms of, or even the early church, so things haven't changed. Schools have received resources to support it. It almost seems that once Catholic Education Week is done, somewhere in June pops up the stuff for the next year. And trustees should be very aware of the fact and proud of the fact that this is spearheaded by Oxta. And if you go on the Oxta website, it is just, it's crammed full of very, very good materials. It's been created by Catholic educators throughout the province in link with our pastors. And, and if you go through it, you see resources that are great for the little ones, the bigger ones and the biggest ones of all in terms of meeting them where they are, in terms of their faith. Schools have received, again, all sorts of those things. If you go on there, you can find prayers and I would encourage you to, to explore that. And the annual journeying with Jesus event will be held on Thursday, May the fourth, which is again, right at the heart of that event as well. I will just add a little bit to that in terms of the journeying with Jesus. That was at one point, the name is changed to become more inclusive, more celebratory and more just, I think. That has been an event where, from my understanding as a newcomer here, was, it took on a different form many years ago. What do we have coming up for this year, first of all, is schools have all been reminded and notified about this so they can prepare for it. But the events such as they are, are ones that are more locally based. There are liturgical resources that have been sent to schools that they can use. At those schools, there are opportunities for the school communities and others, trustees, to visit and take part in them. So it's something that is spread out throughout the, the district school board. And therefore, I think it's probably more visible and more actionable as it is at every site. And, and we are very much looking forward to that. And I'm staring over at superintendent Nar in case there's anything else that I've forgotten about the journeying with Jesus. She's waving me off, so that's good. That's good. I've done all right. Thank you very much. Where, back in November, it seems like ancient times, we began to talk about the work we were doing in terms of anti-black racism. And to try and gather, as our trustees reminded us, some data so that we can look at data and help us plan ahead. And you're aware that we retained Koski Minsky to conduct an equity audit for our board and develop an anti-black racism strategic plan. And they have done that in a methodical way. Sometimes we need to do these things in a, in a purposeful and methodical way to get as rich a data set as possible. They, it's an experienced external third party law firm specializing in human rights, employment law, equity audits and workplace investigations. On March the sixth and March the ninth, they facilitated consultation sessions to seek feedback from black staff, black students and their parents and their guardians at different sites in the board. They're sometimes known as town halls, if you will. And they were opportunities again to, to have people give us feedback so that we can learn more and understand more and improve. For those who are not able to attend the session, there will of course be, as we've learned, an option for a virtual session. And the virtual session will begin, will be on April fourth of this year. The feedback gathered from all the sessions will help guide the development of the anti-black strategic plan. Project Search is a school to work internship program available for eligible students here at our board in partnership with Community Living and Halton Healthcare. This program offers an immersive workplace experience at the host site, which is Milton District Hospital. A virtual presentation about project search is available on our website. I think this was communicated maybe a month ago. And that's for parents and guardians and families who are interested in learning more. And schools are in communication with families, so the schools have been apprised. And that's been hopefully disseminated to families. And this June, we'll have our second graduating class and we're currently recruiting for a third cohort. There are time, there is a time for question now, but before it leaves my aging brain, I do want to mention as well that there has been in the past opportunities, not only at this board, but other boards in the province for students and others to take part in what's been known as the March for Life. So the March for Life takes place in Ottawa. And that is certainly an opportunity, as there are many opportunities for us as Roman Catholics to, to visibly express the fact that we have a faith that understands that there is a, as it was said by one of the American bishops years ago, a seamless bolt of, of, of cloth, right? And that we are a faith that believes in, in that and we want to stand up for that. What we are aware of however, and you're probably aware of as well, is that the, the days of massing together in a march in places isn't always necessarily the most prudent thing to do. And some of us might have memories of over COVID, maybe seeing other marches or activities in Ottawa where there were, maybe it was a, not quite what people had hoped for or intended. There is a concern and a worry, I think, that that traditional form of, of demonstration is something that would be worrisome in terms of safety. We've, I was saying to one of the trustees earlier that I've even had instances where other people at the, in this province who are union leaders have sometimes had their own demonstrations and they've worried about people who are not necessarily fellow travelers in that coming in and taking advantage of, of it in terms of other far right or, or others. And so what we are doing here is we're ensuring that we have other activities involved. And I'd have to toggle over to it and I know that, sorry, let me just get rid of this. Lori, in terms of some of the other activities that are optional for our students, can you just remind me what they were? Cause I've lost that, that note.
Sure, so we, we have had conversations with all of our high schools around other ways to advocate and, and support and build awareness around life issues. And so certainly we've put out information to all of our schools around the Halton Alive's Life Talks Conference. It's taking place this Saturday. If you're interested in looking that up, the information's all on Halton Alive's website. They have a full day of guest speakers and that, so we've promoted that out through our schools. And as well, certainly we'll be promoting the Walk for Life that Halton holds. I believe it's June third that they have their date. So, and then certainly they're coming together at, each of the, the leaders that are at our culture of life groups in the schools are coming together to talk about other ways that they can advocate and inform and, and bring their school community into just understanding what that march is about and other life issues. They've been working on that ongoing, but in particular to highlight it during.
Thank you Director Klein for your presentation, your dates. I'll now open up the floor to trustees. Let's see, hands up, a couple of them. Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just an add on to Director, well, I have a comment and a question. Just an add on to Director Klein's report that we actually did give out the Spirit of Inclusion Awards last night. So recognizing they will be given as well. But it's the, in my opinion, is the best CAC meeting of the year. We welcome the awardees to, to the meeting. They're presented with their awards, the staff, their family join in. It's an amazing celebration of them. I think anyone that would have been at the meeting last night would have felt that joy. Each of the, each of the nominees also does get recognition individually at their schools. And then they have another chance for the award winners to be recognized at this, at the Student Awards of Excellence. So just wanted to mention that that actually did take place last night at our CAC meeting. And a question I did have was with respect to project search, if that's okay? So the question I had is just with respect to the criteria and the type of, the type of students that apply for that program and go through that program. And I know that it's traditionally been for students who may have developmental disabilities or intellectual disabilities. But is there, is there a plan to include people with physical disabilities? Is there a plan to broaden the scope of kids or students who are eligible for that? And if so, are we looking to provide supports for them so they can participate in that opportunity?
I'll pass this to Director Klein and Director Klein?
Chair, I think that's a very good question. And I think that's one that I would need to go back to the team, just see what, what it looks like in terms of the application process. I thought the same thing myself when I clicked on that application as it, as it were. So I would want to ensure that, that there's not barriers for, for students. I'm kind of looking unfairly, okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you. So when would we, I think trustee Kennedy had mentioned earlier about, you know, asking a question and then having that information provided. So when could we expect to have that answer with, on project search provided?
Yeah, I think that can be done by email if you can provide it to trustees as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yep.
Chair, I think that would be done as soon as possible. I was thinking the same thing, email rather than wait till the next, next meeting.
Vice Chair, is that okay?
Yeah, I just want to make sure then that that's subsequently followed up then with communication to families. If the criteria has changed, if it's going to change, and if it hasn't changed, then what is being done to look at those opportunities so that we're not excluding any and all students from applying to that should they have a disability?
Understood, thank you. Thank you Vice Chair. Moving down the speakers list, we have trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So just in regards to the consultation sessions for members of the black community, regarding the virtual consultation session that's happening in April. I know that the Halton Black Parent Council had sent an email a couple of weeks ago in regards to the concern of required registration and disclosure of personal information. So for this upcoming session in April, will there be an attendees list or personal information that will be collected for this virtual session?
Director Klein?
Here I will ask our manager of Human Rights and Equity to comment on that. That certainly has been one that's been discussed and we're aware of that.
Yeah, so Chair, that is, it's a really good question. We thought about that and we've actually worked with Mark Grishik to sort of our privacy manager to understand, you know, what is the scope within which we can collect the information. So for the virtual town hall, we, well, virtual consultation, we will be collecting just names. And so that we can make sure and email ID so that the links can be sent out to the participants. Again, to ensure that these are truly HCDSP parents, staff and families.
Chair, follow up?
Yes, through you, Chair. My follow up is will the meeting be recorded or will this consultation information that's received be a non?
Ms. Jerome?
So the meeting itself will not be recorded, but there are note takers at the virtual consultation who will be taking no notes and sort of recording highlights. And those will be shared back with the, the board and the, the director and then on with the trustees.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly, if you have more questions, I'll come back to you, okay? Moving down speakers list, we have trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to follow up from earlier, for summer school, do we know if that will be the opportunity for some parents to go send their children in person like the public school board has? Or will it only be online?
I'm gonna ask Superintendent Dossero to comment on that. I know when we spoke about this, the last time we were talking about, we were gathering more information on it. I'm not sure if the, if we're accurate in terms of what the public board is doing, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent.
Thank you and through you, Chair. Thank you for the question, trustee Kennedy. In terms of where we are with summer school right now, we are looking to offer both. But what we are offering face to face would be in the subject areas like English, math and the sciences. However, we also have that caveat, it really is pending enrollment. What we have just finished today was interviewing for principals of summer school, letting them know that they might be either face to face or online, pending on the student enrollment. So that's where we are right now. Students, we won't really know numbers until the end of June because kids will find out what their final grades are and then make some determinations. Of course, you always have a number of kids who know that they want to upgrade, so they'll sign up earlier. But real numbers don't come in until the end of June. And that's when we'll have to look at numbers to say what's feasible and what's not feasible for us to do. But we are offering those core subject areas face to face tonight.
Follow up? No, good. Moving down speakers list, we have trustee Saunders, you are up next.
Yes, we're just a, a comment and a question. So I, I had the opportunity to visit this team and I, I had a great time. I spent a couple of hours talking to all the kids and watching the presentations and, and I was very impressed with what I saw. So thank you very much for organizing that. And John, the other question I have, I'm sorry, through you, through this chair, sorry.
You have the floor.
Director Klein. The March for Life in Ottawa, is, is there any credible evidence that there would have been an issue? I'm just wondering what was considered, because I understand that we do have a number of people that were still interested in participating in this. And, and it, for a lot of people, it was really important. And so what were the considerations or is there any kind of credible evidence that something was, was likely to happen this year? Because I think we've been sending kids for like forty years. So I'm just wondering, if you could just sort of give me an idea of what was considered? And then also, what are the plans for the future? Are we, are we gonna return next year, you know, pending their consideration that we had to have?
Director Klein?
Thank you, thank you Chair. Trustee Saunders, I will have Superintendent Nar speak to this for a moment. But I would think the, the consideration itself, as I noted earlier about any potential where we could have a setting or where there could be some form of danger to our students is something that we would take very seriously. So that was certainly something that has become more evident over the last two. become more evident over the last two years, not only outside of Halton, but is something that we have to take advantage of in terms of making our decisions. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Artis to maybe walk us through any other considerations that were considered.
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, we have talked as a large group. So we have representatives that come together about every six weeks or so from each of the high schools that run either the Pro-Life Group, the Culture of Life Group, they're all different names at the schools. So we had a conversation around it. And as I said, we'll be looking at what Halton Alive is promoting and looking at the walk through Halton. Now, of course, that takes place on a Sunday, so it's up to us to advertise and promote and encourage our kids to go. And force anyone to take part in that. But we also had some conversations because we used to have, there used to be a life conference through the diocese that hasn't been happening in the last few years. So we talked about a way that we could gather some of our students together. It will take a year in the planning, but that would be one of the things that we'd be looking at for next year, where you would have sort of our own mini-conference slash retreat that would take place where we could have a life speaker in and bring our students from different high schools together to talk about it. As far as the walk or the march in Ottawa, I think, you know, we we take a look at that and consider it each year, but I do know that prior to COVID, in the last couple of times that students went, some of the concerns were, they had to be very selective in the routes that they would pick because it was getting, in some cases, I don't want to, it wasn't violent, but it was getting a little out of hand and I would say people were in the faces of some of the students. So they had to really select certain routes. So it was starting to become a bit of a concern. But our, you know, I think what we've seen over, as Director Klein mentioned, over the last couple of years is we don't really have a way of controlling or knowing what's gonna happen. And we've seen that through a couple of demonstrations that have gone on in the last few years. So we thought it best that, you know, A, we can really promote in our own schools and rather than only having two or three kids or four kids going from each school, we can certainly bring it alive more in our school community so that more students can participate, more students become aware and get involved in planning their own conference. So that's the type of thing we're looking at for next year to plan something where we bring the kids together.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, you have another question?
Okay, just a quick comment. It just seems a shame that this is something on the national stage and then really is a test, testifies to the faith and are what we consider important. And it would be nice, I hope next year we reconsider and look at an opportunity if, you know, the temperature has not increased, because I think this is an important thing to do. It's an important, you know, demonstration of our faith. So if I can ask for next year that this be considered again.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Up next, we have trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the comments, trustee Saunders. I was planning to go to Ottawa for the March for Life, so I'll let everyone know how it goes. I've gone several years in the past and I've seen students there and it's always wonderful to see their faith in action and their commitment to life from conception to natural death. I will be planning to go and I'll let you know. My question is regarding report cards, actually, it's a question regarding report cards about that parents have only certain days to access the report card. And the question was that shouldn't, the question that was posed to me by parent was, the student's report card be accessible on whenever they would like, like why is there the limit for the window? And some people have missed the window because of March break and now they have to come back to the school and ask for a printed copy. I'm just wondering about the whole procedures about report cards and what can parents expect? Thank you.
Director Klein?
Thank you, Chair. Certainly, the protocols for gathering report cards have evolved over the years. And I do know when we have these things that are connected to student information systems and platforms, sometimes there can be challenges with regard to those as well. Having said that, not having a clear answer for you, I've made eye contact with Superintendent Denalfo and she's been more than happy, I think, to enlighten you.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Carabella, the report cards were distributed the week of February 20th to 24th, depending on the family of schools, so that we had IT to support that distribution. They do have a seven-day window from that to access it electronically. And if a parent didn't, wasn't able to because they were away, they can just call the school and the school is happy to provide them a paper copy. But the window that Power School allows is a seven-day window. So in the email that they receive, it informs them, okay? But they also got the email that this is the day the report card will be accessible online. Many schools still send paper copies home, but parents can always just call the school and they will give them a paper copy.
So follow-up would be then, so this is the particular computer system software that's used that only allows you the seven-day window?
Correct. That's what I heard Superintendent Denalfo.
That is correct, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Any other questions? Saying no other, hands up. Director Klein, thank you for your update and thank you to the staff for all the wonderful work that we do in our system. There's lots happening and trustees have been attending several of the events across our system, which is great. Keep up the great work. So with that, we shall move on to our next information item, which is item 11.3. 2022 Leave Your Mark Student Census Results. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. Pleased to introduce or reintroduce Dr. Colmore and her team, whom she will introduce to all of us shortly. The the move to understand where schools and where boards are at is essential to improvement and essential to developing a more responsive school system, no less in Catholic schools. And the important first step for that is information. And information is always changing and shifting like the sands or the waves. And so it is at the same time an art and a science. So I tip my hat to Dr. Colmore and our team for the work that they do because it gives us some impressions of what we are contending with, and that changes by the time that the census is done. It's changing. So think of this as important information, but important information put in the context of the students and the families from whom it is gathered and in the context of previous data and ongoing data as we move down the road. It's like an impressionistic painting. It's, you know, it's a whole bunch of dabs of paint that creates something that begins to take form and begins to give us some form of direction. So without that, without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr.
Evening and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to finally be able to share with you the results of the HCSB Student Census. This report is linked to our strategic priorities of achieving, believing, and belonging. And it is fitting that we are here today to present, which honors International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination and on World Down Syndrome Day, as race and disability were two of the identity categories that were included in our census. The report in your package provides an overview of the background and some of the results from the census. The full census report is included as an appendix in your package. I'm also grateful tonight for, to have most of the research team with me here. Jen, Zoe, and Nick are here to walk you through the process of the collection and of course, to share the results with you. I do also, I would also like to acknowledge the work and contributions of another team member, Rhea Buckley, who was unable to join tonight. In your package, we have included a summary slide deck, and so that's what we will use tonight to walk you through the results. Jen, over to you. So we wanted to start with some background. The next slide, please. So a few years ago, the Government of Ontario introduced a couple of tools to better identify, understand, and monitor racial inequities in the public sector. These were the anti-racism data standards and a regulation under the Anti-Racism Act 2017 to collect personal information, so that's demographic or identity-based data, in compliance with these data standards. The regulation mandated specific public sector organizations, including education, so all school boards, to collect data on at least four identity-based categories, Indigenous identity, ethnic origin, race, and religion by 2023. Ministry of Education also launched the Education Equity Action Plan and created the Equity Secretariat to help school boards develop a consistent approach to collecting and using voluntary student demographic data and gain a better understanding of their student population to address barriers to student success. The Equity Secretariat provided a student following rules and guidance from the data standards with questions in 10 identity-based categories. And these were related to protected grounds under the Ontario Human Rights Code. The Secretariat suggested that having data along a wide spectrum of social identities, so like race, sexual orientation, disability, enables boards to more precisely identify inequities and support better decision-making. With all this in mind, Halton Catholic District School Board launched its first board-wide student census called Leave Your Mark in 2022. Our rationale for this collection was similar to the Equity Secretariat's. Collect and analyze identity-based data to help us better understand our students' identities and experiences and to help us identify, address, and monitor systemic barriers to student success and wellbeing. This work is aligned with HCSB's commitment to ensuring that every member of our community feels welcome, valued, included, and respected. And it's reflected in our equity and inclusion policy and of course, our multi-year strategic plan. Ultimately, the student census data will enable us to help every student in our board through creating and promoting more equitable and inclusive learning environments for all students. Thank you, Jen. Next slide, please. Survey development and promotion in line with the anti-racism data standards and using the template from the Equity Secretariat, the student census included 10 identity-based data categories. Sample items included, do you identify as First Nations, Maitre or Inuit? Do you consider yourself a Canadian? What is your ethnic or cultural origins? Which racial groups best describe you? What is your religious or spiritual affiliation? The survey also included several perception items related to inclusion and belonging. The gender identity response options aligned with the elementary curriculum expectations. The sexual orientation question was only asked in the secondary panel and respondents were able to skip any question that they did not wish to answer. Church Development Services piloted the items in the process of collecting student census information of students and parents in spring 2021. We worked with Strategic Communications to conduct a public awareness campaign to promote the Leave Your Mark Student Census from November 2021 to February 2022. And this included social media posts, board-wide communications, and publicly posted information sessions. Survey administration and participation. So the student census was administered from February 28th to April 4th, 2022. In line with direction from the Equity Secretariat, parents and guardians of students in K-8 were invited to complete the census with or on behalf of their child via an email invitation. Students in grade nine to 12 were invited to complete the census on their own during class time. Participation in the student census was voluntary and expressed consent was obtained from respondents prior to beginning the survey. If parents opted their secondary school child out of the census, then that student did not receive a customized link for the census. We made several attempts to connect with parents and secondary students throughout the five weeks. We sent targeted email reminders to those who had not completed the census. And we made the census available in six different languages, as well as on paper by request, to make it more accessible to HCSB students, parents, and guardians. That's for participation. The elementary census was sent to the parents of 22,759 of our elementary students. 5,370 respondents consented to the survey and answered one question for a response rate of 26, 23.6%. The secondary census was sent to 12,984 of our secondary students. 1,987 respondents consented to the survey and answered at least one question for a response rate of 38.4%.
Thank you, Zoe. So could go to the next slide, please. And I'll talk a little bit about the privacy and security. So the student census was confidential but non-anonymous. And this is important because the data has to be collected to things like student achievement, student wellbeing later on. And so as part of the anti-racism data standards, which I'm gonna call ARDS, because I'm gonna be repeating it quite a bit, in line with ARDS, this data is stored in its raw format and its identifiable form for five years. It's stored on a password-protected encrypted thumb drive that's kept in a locked cabinet here at CEC. Once we had that raw data that we're able to connect with things like student achievement, it went through a process of de-identification. And this process means that we take everything that can identify a student away from the data. So everything from your name, your Ontario education number, even your grade and the school you went to is removed from that data before we carry out analysis. That de-identified data is then linked back to the confidential but not anonymous data via a dummy key that's basically a bunch of numbers that don't have any real meaning that are connected via a key that, again, is stored on a locked encrypted thumb drive in a locked cabinet. We then take that de-identified data, perform our analysis. And to further ensure the anonymity, or rather, the confidentiality and that none of the data is identifiable, all data that you're gonna see here today is presented in aggregate form. And we also undertook data suppression rules, meaning that any response that received fewer than 15 responses is put into an additional data category. So you're gonna see that as I go through the data, there's an additional data category and those are all those individual responses. I'll turn now to the actual findings from our census. And as Jen and Zoe pointed out, we asked a number of questions related to identity. The first question, we asked the parents of our elementary school students and those of our secondary school students. We asked them, what was the first language you or your child learned to speak? And you can see for both elementary and secondary, about 84% of our students spoke English as a first language, followed by Spanish at just over 7%. For elementary school students, this is followed by Arabic, Portuguese, Tagalog, and Polish at over 2%. And for our secondary students, this is followed by Urdu, Arabic, French, Tagalog, Portuguese, at all above 2%. We also asked, what language do you, or in the case of elementary school students, does your child speak most at home? And again, English is spoken by the vast majority of our students at home, followed by Spanish. And then for our elementary school students, it's followed by Portuguese, Arabic, Tagalog, and Polish at above 1%. And for our secondary students, it's followed by Arabic, Urdu, Tagalog, Portuguese, Polish, French, Chinese, and Croatian, all at above 1%. We also asked students about their ethnic origin. And I want to point out too, when you look at this slide, for all these questions, unless noted otherwise, respondents were able to choose multiple options to to claim as their ethnic origin or the language they spoke. So the totals you're gonna see here add up to more than 100%. And that's to reflect the ARDS and the fact that this kind of represents identity in its kind of multiple forms. So we'll see for both elementary and secondary school students, we see here the highest number is Canadian as the ethnic origin for both groups, followed by Italian, English, and Irish. For our elementary school students, this is followed by Portuguese, Filipino, and Polish at above 8%. And for our secondary school students, it's followed by Scottish, Portuguese, at above 8%. As well, which racial group best describes your child? And for both elementary and secondary school students, we see that the majority of our students identify as white at 66.2% for our elementary school students and 58.8% for our secondary school students. For our elementary school students, this is followed by Latino at 12%, Southeast Asian at just over 9%, Black at 8.7%, and Middle Eastern, South Asian, and East Asian, all under 6%. For secondary students, we see the breakdown is as follows, South Asian at 11.7%, Latino at 9.8%, Middle Eastern- at 9.8%, Middle Eastern at 9.2%, and Black at 7.5%, followed by Southeast Asian at 7.1% and East Asian. We asked students about their religion or spiritual affiliation, and as you can see for both elementary and secondary, the majority of our students identify as Roman Catholic. This is followed in both cases by other forms of Christians, so including Orthodox and Protestant denominations. For elementary school students, it's followed by spiritual but not religious, and no religious or spiritual affiliation at above 1%. And for our secondary school students, it's followed by no religious or spiritual affiliation, Muslim, and unsure or spiritual but not religious, and the rest are all below 2%. As mentioned before, we asked about gender identity for both our elementary and secondary school students. Our elementary school students received options that were in line with curriculum expectations, so you'll see here, they were asked whether or not their child identified as a boy, a girl, or there was a space to enter an additional gender identity. And for our secondary students, they're presented, in line with ARDS, a number of different options. So we see for elementary, the majority of our students identify as either a boy or a girl, with just 0.9% of our elementary school students, according to their parents, having additional gender identities. For our secondary school students, again, the majority identify as either a woman or girl or man or boy, but it's followed by non-binary students at 1.8%, questioning at 1.4%, gender fluid at 1.2%, and not sure gender non-conforming, trans boy or man, or additional gender identities not included, all below 1%. Sexual orientation, we see the majority of our secondary school respondents identify as straight or heterosexual, followed by bisexual at 7.2%, unsure at 2.7%, pansexual at 2.4%, questioning at 2.2%, and the rest under 2%. We also asked students and their parents whether or not they identified as a person with disability, and this was not a multiple-choice question. This was a question where they were asked to choose either yes, no, or unsure. 4.9% of our elementary school students identify as people with disabilities, 7.5% of our secondary school students. If they answered yes on this question, they were asked to select all that applies of the types of disability that they identify as having, including learning disabilities for elementary, which was the highest at 47.2%, and for our secondary school students, the highest, a slight majority of 50.4% as having a mental health disability, followed by learning disabilities at 43.8%. We asked as well about immigration status and where people were born, and again, this was also a single-answer question. 16.1% of elementary respondents, 23.9% of secondary respondents, were born outside of Canada, and of those, we asked what their current immigration status was. So you can see for elementary school students, the majority of those born outside of Canada are currently at 54.2%, permanent residents, followed by Canadian citizens at 34%. For our secondary school students, this is flipped, so our Canadian citizens make up 64.6% of those born outside of Canada, followed by permanent residents at 24.1%. So that is the end of our basic identity collection. The next section are cross-tabulation. So as mentioned, as you saw in the slides, we also collected perceptual information, so about how students felt about their experience at school. What we did is we took that information and we cross-tabulated it with those identity information that we have, in order to create this breakdown that you see here of perceptions by these various identity groups. And so the way we chose what to show you here is based on two main features. So the first is, we carried out statistical tests to see whether or not these differences were statistically significant, and it's denoted on these charts by the asterisks here, next to the name of the various identity groups. And so we're presenting you the data that is the most statistically significant out of all the perceptual question breakdowns. But we also, as part of the Anti-Racism Data Standards, were required to consult with equity-deserving groups within our community around the data that we collected. So before we can share it with everybody, we had to go to these groups and get feedback about their experiences and how it relates to the data we collected. And so the perceptual cross tabs that we're sharing with you today were those that were not only statistically significant, but were also considered in our feedback that was carried out with over 75 attendees, students, some staff, and some community members, to be the most meaningful and related to their day-to-day experiences in school. And so what you see here is a breakdown of our charts here, and I'll just briefly explain what the colors mean. You'll see at the very top, there's a green bar with one number there. That's the total for all respondents in each panel. And then you'll see various colors of blue. The darker the blue, the more negative it is, so the less in agreement these groups are with the statement you see. The brighter orange it is, the more positive it is, the more in agreement each respondent group is. And so the first question that I'll share with you now is about positive identity reflection. So we asked parents and secondary school students, is your child or is your identity positively reflected at school? And this included things such as assemblies, learning materials, curriculum, and other experiences at school. We found that for elementary and secondary, the response was overall positive, so 89.6% of elementary respondents agree with the statement, my child's identity is positively reflective in school, and 74.2% of our secondary school students agree with this statement. However, when we break it down by the various groups that we collected data on, as you can see here, we begin to see a different pattern emerging. So if we look at our groups within the racial categories, we see that our Black students in elementary are quite a bit lower in their agreement compared to the total, so just 67.2% of parents of Black students agree that their child's identity is positively reflective in school. And similarly, if we look at the secondary school panel, we see another drop there, 65.7% of Black students consider their identity positively reflected at school. We see the numbers are also low for the other groups here, including East Asian, South Asian, Southeast Asian, and for white students, it's actually more positively agreeing with the statement that my identity is positively reflective in school for both elementary and secondary. When we look at the gender categories, which is another area where we see some of the biggest differences, we see that while boys and girls in elementary are about the same as our board total, 89.6 and 89.8, for those who have additional gender identities, we see it's quite a bit lower at 75%. Looking over at secondary, where we have a number of gender identities, including gender fluid, gender non-conforming, non-binary, questioning, trans boy or man, we can see that the numbers are quite a bit lower, so at least 30 percentage points lower in most cases as we go through. Similarly, looking at disability, another category here, you see that students with disability in our elementary panel are about six percentage points lower in terms of their agreement with their identity being positively reflected at school. And for our secondary students, we see the number is even lower there. 58.4% of students with disability agree with the statement compared to 74.2% overall. I should note as well, in secondary school, when we look at students who are not heterosexual, we see a very similar pattern as to gender, so those numbers are also quite a bit lower and are statistically significant compared to HCSB total. Similarly, looking at students who have a religion other than Roman Catholic, we see the numbers, again, are lower than both the HCSB total and their Roman Catholic peers for both secondary and elementary. The next question I'm going to show you is about the idea of safety at school. And again, this was a broad idea of safety, kind of leaving it up to each respondent about what safety means and what it means to feel safe at school, but we asked, does your child feel quite too very safe at school, or do you feel quite too very safe at school? And again, overall, the number was quite positive on both sides, so 93.1% overall, compared to 81.7% agree with the statement in the secondary panel. When we begin to break it down by the various identity groups that we have here, we see that these numbers also differ. So we see statistically significant, our Black students are 89.5% agreeing with the statement, so lower than the total for elementary, and for secondary, it's just under 10 percentage points lower for our Black students at 72.4%. For our other statistically significant groups within this, we see that our East Asian students are slightly more in agreement with this statement, and our Southeast Asian students as well. Looking again at gender, we see that there's more than a 10-point percentage difference between those with additional gender identities here at 81.6% compared to the 93.1% overall. And turning over to secondary, we see again very similar numbers, so 40 percentage point drop between those who identify as gender fluid and the board as a whole. We see similar, smaller numbers for those who are gender non-conforming, non-binary, questioning, or trans, trans boy or men, rather, excuse me. And when we look at sexualities, we see again 20 percentage point drops between asexual and the total. Similarly, large drops for bisexual, gay, lesbian, pansexual, queer, and questioning students. Looking at disability, we see the same pattern. We see a much lower response in agreement with the statement of feeling quite too very safe at school at 76.8%, and in secondary, we see that it's 67.5%, so lower than elementary and lower. When we look at religions other than Roman Catholic, again, in elementary, these numbers are all lower than their Roman Catholic peers in terms of feeling quite too very safe at school. And on the secondary side, we see a similar pattern, though I will note there's a statistically significant more agreement with this statement for Hindu respondents. Onto the next slide. This is the final cross-tabulation that I'm sharing with you. This is related to a sense of belonging at school, so we asked parents, does your child feel they belong at school? And for secondary school students, we asked, do you feel you belong at school? Overall, for HCSB respondents in elementary, this number was 95.3%. For our secondary school students, this was 78.6%. When we break it down, again, we see our Black students for both secondary and elementary are lower than the HCSB total and lower than many of their peers as well, in terms of agreement with feeling they belong at school. We see for elementary, we see statistically significant positive agreement for East Asian, South Asian, and Southeast Asian students. And for our secondary school students, we see slightly lower numbers for our Middle Eastern students and higher numbers for our white students. Looking at gender identity, again, we see a fairly big drop between additional gender identities at 77.6% compared to 95.3% in terms of feeling they belong. For our secondary school students, you can see it's a similarly, a much larger drop than for elementary. We have more than 30 percentage points difference between those who are gender fluid, gender non-conforming, non-binary, questioning, and higher for trans boy or men, but still quite a bit lower than the total overall. If we look at disability as well, we see our students with disability in elementary almost a little more than 15 percentage point differences between those with disabilities feeling they belong at school compared to a more than 10 percentage point drop for those in secondary, feeling they belong at school. We see similar pattern with students who are not Roman Catholic in our religious panel in elementary, as well as within our secondary panel as well. We see statistically significant feelings of not belonging at school for our Jewish students, those with no religious or spiritual affiliation, as well as those who are spiritual but not religious. That is the end of the results section. I'll turn it over to Dr. Collmore to wrap everything up for us.
The student census that we conducted, in our opinion, has successfully provided us, HCSB, with more information about our students and their identities. We now have a better understanding of the students that we serve. In terms of our next steps, we will be sharing these results with the various departments, starting with Program Services to dive into the data and ask additional questions and run additional analyses that will ultimately help their work and planning for all of our students. We are also continuing to do various data analyses, including disproportionality indices, linking the census data to historical data that we have in our student information system to, again, monitor and verify and measure any gaps that may exist with respect to academic achievement, attendance, suspensions, et cetera. So we provided a lot of information for you in the package, so please let us know if you have any questions about the collection or about the results. But I will turn it back over to Director Klein.
Thank you, Dr. Collmore and Chair. Again, just to finish off what I think has been a pretty detailed and very well organized presentation, there's going to be a lot of questions, I think, that trustees would have, and I think the other important factor, just to piggyback on what Dr. Collmore said, is that we're really in a good time now in terms of things that we're up to as a school board. We are, we've got new trustees who are three months, four months into the job, and we'll be sinking our teeth into the work of creating a new strategic plan. That's fantastic, and board improvement planning and other plans that have their time to begin and time to be refined, I think we're at a perfect moment. And so to look at this set of data, amongst other sets of data, we looked at our workforce census, we looked at EQO and other achievement data, we're fairly data-rich. It's a matter of looking for information and finding what information is actually knowledge, and from knowledge, we create wisdom and hopefully, good decisions. So those endeavors that we're about to embark on, and many of you are part of that, particularly with the MYSP, it's perfect timing for it. And so I do want to thank the team once again for the work that they've done, and of course, for the parents and the students who have opened themselves up to ensure that they have given us the data that we rely on.
Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting the group and the report. And I'll thank Jen, Zoe, and Nick and Dr. Collmore for presenting the report. Indeed, Director Klein, we have a lot of trustees who have questions. We have a long speakers list, so I'll open up the floor to trustees now. First up is Vaishnur Agnew. You have to hand up, you're at the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just a comment of appreciation. I know how much went into this. I know how much work this was, and I know, I can't pretend to guess that, you know, all of the hours that have been spent tabulating and gathering and putting this information together, so I'm very grateful for that. I'm grateful that we have some concrete numbers now to take a look at so that we can attempt to action on these. I'm encouraged to see that there are some positives in the report, but I do want to comment on one area in particular for right now. And I'm not sure if staff was surprised when they saw the numbers as they pertain to our students with disabilities. But I'm not sure if surprised is the right word, but certainly upset and disappointment at seeing those numbers. So you've gone over those, and I don't want to reiterate them, but when we look at the fact that in secondary, 40% of students with disabilities don't see their identity positively reflected, which is an increase from elementary, and I'm not sure why. And I'm not looking for answers on these, I'm just making a comment. 32% of our secondary students with disabilities don't feel safe at school. 25% of our elementary students don't feel safe at school. This is a great gut punch. 35% of students with disabilities don't feel like they belong at school, with disabilities feel unwelcome. This doesn't include intersectionalities, which we know adds a whole additional layer to that, and I'm not sure how that's been captured. And in your report, there's a comment there about how much of this is as a result of a lack of knowledge and accommodations, and that is certainly concerning on many different levels. I know that we, there are a number of different reasons why this could be, and I look forward to understanding more when you have those meetings. A few things have come to mind, like we don't have an opportunity for adapted sports in our schools, we don't have support for extracurricular activities for our students with disabilities, so they can't participate in some of those things that happen, they can't go to dances, they can't do those sorts of things. They have accommodation issues, so from a physical perspective, they actually can't participate. So having said all of that, and recognizing that for many, the schools are their only chance for belonging and inclusion and participation, because they don't get that in the outside environment, so they look to the schools to have that. So I think what I'm looking at is moving forward, and I know I'm going to have to go back in the queue, but I do have a question about, is, so I have a Is, so I have a question on timeline, and I do wonder if there is going to be consideration for short-term, long-term, and medium action plans. I have to think that we have some supports in our system right now. We know it for a fact that students with disabilities are more prevalent to have mental health issues. We speak often and frequently at this table about mental health. I've yet to see the mental health programs that have been uniquely adapted to kids with disabilities. Perhaps that's a low-hanging fruit that we can consider. So I'd like to understand what this timeline is going to look like, appreciating there's a lot of work to go into this, but respectfully, these students can't wait while we do more data analysis and cross-referencing. I think we have an opportunity to take a look at what we currently have in place and see how we can utilize that. And I want to also understand, as you move forward, aside from taking it to the individual superintendents and then their departments. Are we going to be engaging with CPIC and CAC and some of those groups who can provide lived experience and feedback? So I need to understand a little bit more about what this plan is going to look like moving forward, as well as what those timelines are going to look like. Because I think it's imperative that we understand what's going to happen beyond the scope of what's been presented this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I'll pass this on to Director Klein.
Chair, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more in terms of the emotional reaction that I think many of us feel within the statistics. And I think the statistics aren't, the statistics don't have feelings, the statistics don't have a point of view, the statistics are there to prod us and push us forward. And so I would agree with Trustee Agnew wholeheartedly that with our minds and with our hearts, we need to take a look at these. And I do agree, and I welcome and appreciate the suggestion about hitting the ground running in terms of what are the, you know, short, medium, and long-term goals, that no one is expecting, you know, long-term goals to be established or worked on immediately, but there certainly must be within this some areas that we can address as soon as possible. So from my vantage point, and I think I speak on behalf of that senior team and the leaders that we see before us, that is something that we are, we are committed to. And if there are advisory groups, and you've identified some, that would help us in terms of gleaning the information a little more. And I think we would be, it would be incumbent upon us to, to embrace that.
Director Klein, Vice Chair, I'll come back to you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Director Klein. I was looking for more than that, but that's fine. The other, the follow-up question that I would have would be, you know, has there, given that you've had these conversations with some of the groups that are impacted and things like that, and we have these stats in front of us, and I think in order to move forward to know what needs to be done in addition to the feedback, are we going to really dig deep into why? Why is there an increase in certain elements from elementary to secondary? Why don't kids feel like they belong? We can, we can summarize it by saying that there's an issue with accommodations and knowledge, but what does that mean? So is there going to be a piece to this where we are actually going to figure out why these students don't feel safe and why they don't feel like they belong? Because I think that that's imperative that we know that information before we try to act on it.
Director Klein?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Colomore, because I think one of the things that the Vice Chair had noted was the, the conversations with designated groups.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So to Trustee Agnew. So, so some of those bullet points that are included in the census report underneath the tables that we shared, those are directly the narratives from the equity deserving groups. So those comments come directly from students with disabilities who participated in, in the consultation. And so we are required by the arts to include that narrative. And so it's very, I did have follow-up with the staff who participated in, in those sessions, and so they also echoed your sentiments of following up with students as, as we go forward. I did speak to Superintendent Rossi this morning about our next steps with respect to Program Services. And I've spoken to Superintendent Kroll similarly in terms of meeting with their chiefs or their leaders in their, in their areas to really dive deep into the data. Because what we presented here for the Board of Trustees and for the public is very high-level, but in order to make actionable steps, we have to really dive deep into the data and the additional questions that we received. And the next step can certainly be engaging in further consultations with the groups to better understand what the students meant by those types of comments.
Thank you, Dr. Colomore. I shall now move down the speakers list to Trustee Ohan Chanada. You have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair and Director Klein. I just was hoping that maybe through you, Director Klein, Dr. Colomore could elaborate, because as I read through the package, it's positive to know that this data, albeit ten thousand three hundred fifty-seven respondents with such a small margin of error, this is valid data. So this data is very fulsome, and we can use it to move forward, but I'm hoping Dr. Colomore could elaborate on how small the margin of error is.
Director Klein?
Always a great question, sorry, Chair, always a great question with regard to what is valid, what's not valid. And I think for those of us who are not part of the, of the world of statistics, it's sometimes mystifying, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Colomore on that regard. I agree.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question, Trustee Ohan Chanada. So I'll start, and then maybe Nick, you can, you can follow up. So we did hear from over ten thousand students, so about one-third of our population. So that's a pretty decent number. I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot for any one given collection. With respect to, you know, is it a good response rate? It's certainly not as high as we would have liked. We would have obviously liked to have heard from more students than, than that. However, we did do statistical tests to, to test whether or not this was a good number, this was like a representative number. And essentially, we did margins of error analyses, which are included in your package, and all of them were below about three percent, plus or minus three percent. And a low margin of error means that you, your census survey results are likely to be representative of the population. So we are very confident as a team, numbers are representative. And I'm going to pass it over to Nick, because I believe he did one other thing to, to test with respect to statistical testing.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we did do those tests, as Dr. Colomore said, and the highest number was around three percent for each of these, for the basic identity questions. The other thing we did, because we were a little bit worried that there would be any over-representation from a particular part of Halton or a particular school. And so we ran correlation tests between the response rates for each school and where they were in the various, what are called the deprivation indices. So we were worried, because what typically happens in these kinds of surveys is you get more responses from higher socioeconomic areas. But we did not have any, any correlation with that at all. We had a little bit of, some schools had a little bit higher response rate than others, but there was no pattern to that. And overall, we're quite confident in these numbers being around three percent. So that's at a ninety-five percent confidence rate, so we're, again, pretty happy with the ten thousand responses.
Trustee Ohan Chanada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, because I had read through the package, and thank you for validating that this data is real and it's good data, and we can move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Up next is Trustee Saunders. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much. My concern is that, my understanding is that we went out like multiple times, and we're really asking people to participate. And how do we know that we did not introduce a bias in here that the people that did answer were people that really wanted to answer? And the people that didn't answer didn't want to answer, because I, I understand you're saying we're ninety-five percent sure, but I'm just wondering if out of the gate, we've got a biased sample. And, you know, we're going to be basing decisions, you know, based on this, and it may not really be that representative, because I'm thinking of twenty-three percent for elementary schools. And, and I understand we went out multiple times. I mean, I can see that being like, maybe not a representative number. I mean, maybe we got the twenty-three percent that really wanted to be, to answer, but the seventy, more than seventy-five percent that didn't. So, so how, how are we sure that what we've got here is not like a biased sample right off the bat?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. I'll pass this to Director Klein.
Chair, I'm, Chair, I'm confident that these, these statistics, these numbers are ones we can rely on. And I think Dr. Colomore could elaborate on that. I think she already has begun to do that, but I am really confident in it. And, but point, sometimes where there's a hundred percent involvement, it's not necessarily more reliable as well, so.
Director Klein, through you, Trustee, but twenty-three percent, like I just can't see how we can, we can draw a lot from that. That seems like a very low number.
Saunders, I think Director Klein was requesting some information from Dr. Colomore. So hold a question, we'll come back. Dr. Colomore?
So through you, as Director Klein has mentioned, you know, our previous comment about the reliability of the response rate and the sample and the additional statistical tests that we ran, those all point and suggest to us as researchers in many, for many years, that the results are reliable, and there were low margins of error. Survey bias is always something that is a possibility, but we did reach out a number of times, like we, like Zoe and Jen mentioned at the beginning, in terms of, you know, making sure that we, we sent out multiple reminders, we sent out targeted reminders. So survey bias is always a possibility in any collection, but the statistical tests that we ran, we are confident that the numbers are representative of the population.
Trustee Saunders, your next question. Oh, you're good. Okay, thank you. Up next is Trustee Kelly. You have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much with this really in-depth research that has been done. So I just want to comment specifically on page sixteen of the student census results. It was that the majority of students that do not feel that they're represented is specifically their ethnic or cultural origin, racial background, and abilities. I also do remember that Student Senate mentioned in a student trustee report a few weeks back that minority groups did not see themselves represented among staff and administration. Also do want to mention that back in twenty twenty-one, former trustee Guzzo passed the motion Hiring Practices, in which it practices making sure that we're tracking process of recruitment, prioritizing hiring those of equity deserving groups, and ensuring that there are mentoring programs in place for these students. And I wonder if there's any, has there been any progress on this, I guess, motion in regards to these topics that may be happening in the background?
Trustee Kelly, we are going off-topic a little bit, but Director Klein, that we are talking about is the report.
It's specifically in regards to representing students among hired staff.
Okay, Director Klein?
Thank you. So Chair, there, there was other layers, I think, to the question as well, so let me just go in terms of my own thought process to, to, to address it, and I'll get to, I think, the, the, the ultimate question you had, and I'm going to rely on Superintendent Oldman at, at the end to, to help with that as well. So one of, one of the things I think comes up in terms of representation is within the curriculum itself. And we have pretty much all our senior team here today, but I do know that there's been some work that I think Superintendent Kroll could comment on, but I think everybody could, could pop in as well in terms of details to it, in terms of culturally relevant resources and culturally relevant pedagogy. I know there has been professional development on that. I know there's been investment in terms of resources for it. For example, within the early literacy programs where trustee would probably be heartened to know that the resources that we've used now are much different than the ones that were used when, years ago, in terms of representing the, the wide array of, of who Canadian, Canadians are today, as opposed to what we used years ago. And then in terms of the, the honing of the pedagogical skills to ensure that instructional practice and assessment practice do address those. We're always on a, a journey of improvement, and we can always do better. I do know that we have made some efforts and inroads on that, and we will continue to do so. With regard to the hiring practices, I will ask Superintendent Oldman to make some comments on that at this point.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Kelly, just to elaborate further on, on the notation, so certainly as Director Klein had indicated, sorry, am I close enough? Okay, okay. I, I think this is a, you know, like many aspects, this is a multi-disciplinary approach with multiple departments aiding in that sense of belonging, which feeds into achieving and, and, and further. So I think certainly there's been some kind of cross-department work, but specifically as it relates to, I think, your question, as it related to tracking progress, what PPM one sixty-five requires of us, what VI ninety-nine requires of us. I think that's what you're narrowing it on specifically, so I want to be intentional if that is correct.
Yes, and also just generally like representation.
Yeah, so in terms of as it relates to recruitment, I think obviously the first step was, was taking the data, right, certainly. But in terms of what are we doing is, so it's a point in time. I think there's an important piece for us to also understand, well, where are our applicants coming in from? And in terms of their social identities, their own lived experience, we're trying to, that was not being captured by data points in the past. So since last year, we started this process, and I'll say basically January, right around when we actually launched our workforce census, we started critically reviewing our, our practices, separate and apart from our equity audit, that is an ongoing investment and critical review of our processes. But we've tried to do that in concert with the equity audit, where we know that we can make removals of barriers and whatnot along the way. So we've started asking data through the application process of all applicants, so that we have a better understanding of, so we have an understanding of our active staff now through our workforce census. But we also need to know, well, where are our ongoing efforts kind of leaning and guarding, and where are our gaps in those processes? So we have started through, through kind of a data collection, through the application process as one. We made it an investment and moved to, so we have our, kind of our teaching staff and our non-teaching staff. We made an investment in, into a program that allows all applicants to go into one area. It kind of just makes it a bit simpler and removes a perceived barrier for, for any group, but particularly an equity deserving group. In the application process, we've made some kind of investments that really took off in September of this year. So while some of our processes in terms of those data collections started in January of twenty twenty-two, this is our first school year with, with that data collection from an applicant perspective. I think that will aid us in understanding where, what progress are we making against these gaps and the cross-tabulations of our student census and our workforce census. And then separate and apart from that is obviously an important piece, which is the learning, the unlearning, the relearning with staff. I think training, and particularly those who are involved in the recruitment and selection processes. So we have invested that within the HR department, but as well as those who are involved in processes that are outside of the department, where HR kind of supports those processes, because we just won't be involved in every interview process or interview panel. So those are some initial steps we've made, and that will help us, I think, identify the progress. Obviously, our workforce census did identify that the majority of, or a significant amount of our racial identified groups or members or employees are within the newest, like the kind of the first five years of employment. So we want to make sure that we're retaining staff in that regard, but also adding to offset the gap that we clearly obviously see here is notable and significant and one that we need to, to bridge. So those are some quick elements that I can offer here. I'm happy to provide additional information at a subsequent meeting, but that, that might be something I can offer on, on the cusp here.
Do you have a follow-up?
No follow-up. Thank you so much.
I see your hand up again. There is, did you put it up again, or is it an error? Okay, that's okay. I'll take it down. No worries. Moving down the speakers list, we have up next, Trustee Boy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, again, I will echo, congratulations to all of you for your hard work, and thank you very much. This is a very impressive effort, and I'm glad to hear the confidence that you all have in the results, and, and I'm glad that we were able to be a part of this process and that this is coming at this time. I did want to highlight some of the things that as a student struck me as particularly important and significant that I read in this data. We haven't had the chance to bring this report to Student Senate, which we'll be doing next week, but personally, these are some of the things that I think have echoed what we've been seeing qualitatively from our students. Obviously, there's disparities among treatment and racial minorities, cultural minorities feeling represented in our schools. I know some trustees have already brought that up, but obviously that's a significant issue that we've been hearing for a while now. Particularly in regard to belonging in safe schools, students with disabilities and LGBTQ plus students, that was some data that, you know, definitely wasn't surprising to us as students based on what we're seeing in our schools. But definitely something that we want to address moving forward. One thing that I was, I was a little bit surprised to see, but I, in, you know, reflection on the pandemic and what's happened in recent years, pages seventeen and eighteen, first page seventeen of the report. pages 17 and 18, first page 17 of the report, on students feeling connected to staff and other students in the secondary panel, that was something as a secondary student that I felt really resonated with what we're seeing in our schools. You know, qualitatively, we've been commenting for the past couple of years on, you know, this lack of engagement and school climate and school atmosphere and these types of things, which have been hard to quantify, but seeing it presented in this way does feel a little bit, you know, validating and is a reflection, I think, of those feelings. You know, when we see secondary students are this disconnected from staff and other students, I think that's something that we need to consider moving forward. And it's definitely a nebulous issue, and I don't know necessarily how to tackle it, but I wanted to draw importance and significance to that. And then the second thing, the last thing that I'll bring up is page 18, whether or not students both in elementary and secondary panels feel comfortable seeking mental health support. That was definitely something that I noticed, that that was lower than perhaps I, I'd like to see, and I think based on the work that our amazing mental health team has done in promoting those resources. But that's definitely something that struck me as I was going through the report. And then furthermore, just echoing, safe schools, making sure that, you know, girls were slightly lower than boys, which I think we've heard a lot of concerns regarding gender-based violence recently, students and, and the impact on them in particular, and Black students in safe schools. So thank you all for this work, and I look forward to seeing the work that comes out of it and, and what's being done. But I hope this sort of, the trustees at the table, that this sort of lines up with some of the things that, you know, we've been sharing the past couple of years, past trustees have shared via student concerns. And, and I hope that, I'm glad that this took place, and I hope that we have some great work to do moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Boy. Up next is Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for your survey today. I just had a question about the timeframe. Do you have another survey planned for the end of this year? Because it did take about, it was about a year, it was last year that the survey was done. So we have now about like 50% of those high school students as of June. Grade 11 or grade 12, or graduating, the grade 12s have already left. Do you plan another survey anytime soon with a follow-up?
Director Klein?
Chair, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Collymore. In terms of our battery and array of surveys that we have, whether it's workforce, I know we've made decisions in terms of ongoing workforce census data. The next step in terms of this survey eludes me at this point. Go ahead.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Kennedy. So as we mentioned when we presented the workforce census, this will likely be on a five-year cycle to align with the workforce census. As Superintendent Oldman mentioned, you know, there is ongoing data collection for our workforce. And so that is something we could also consider for our students during the registration process. But those conversations about how to legal about collecting those types of data and on an ongoing basis are, are still at the early stages. But as of right now, we are looking at a five-year cycle.
Trustee Kennedy, you have a follow-up?
Just wondering for high school students, so we did have a higher response rate from high school students, maybe likely because they were given time. Did any of the students who, I guess there'd be another survey, but any of the students who didn't answer, because we only had 38.4%, they were actually given time. Did any of them say why they might not have done the survey, given they actually were given the time to do it?
Dr. Collymore?
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, there was no reasons given as to why a student would or would not have completed the survey. Like we mentioned, all of the items were voluntary or optional, so students could have skipped all of them. They could have skipped, answered just one reason was given.
Is it a clarification question? You have two questions.
Yes.
I'll put you in the, in the, on the speaker's list, okay? Come back, okay, so Trustee Carabella, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question, and you did speak about it a bit, the, the word "safe", and like the definition of "safe" that was, didn't define it. And of course, categories to, if someone feels physically safe or emotionally safe, or peer pressure, or. My question is, so you didn't break it down into allowing a student say, what aspect of safety did they feel that they weren't safe? Can you explain why, or why was it left general or not broken down?
I'll pass this to Dr. Collymore.
Oh, I'm going to pass this to the team. Yeah, so I can't remember the exact question he asked.
It was quite broad, it was, "How safe do you feel at school?"
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have your follow-up?
Yeah, follow-up question to that. So were we limited with these questions? Are they like questions that came from the ministry in particular for this census? Or were we able to, to massage the questions into the way we wanted?
Dr. Collymore?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Carabella. So the questions aligned with a sense of belonging, a sense of safety, a sense of personal reflection. So they were items that were selected from the school climate battery, so that they, we could then use those same questions year after year, and also take a look at them when we do have a school climate cycle. We can see similar, like whether things have been increasing or decreasing. So it's ability, it's an ability for us to track over time at different periods, especially given the fact that our census won't happen like every five years. It's, it's an opportunity for us to use the same items over and over again. So we weren't provided with those template items. We took them directly from our battery that we've used for other things.
Thank you. I will go down the list, sorry, Trustee Carabella, I give you two questions. You have a clarification?
Not a clarification, another question.
Okay, I'll put it back in this because this, so we have a couple of trustees who have not spoken before. I shall go to them and come back trusted. Trustee Powell, you're up next.
I'm just trying to process all that, there's a lot of information. So it's, it is slightly disturbing too, when you hear about one in five children or students don't feel safe. Whether it is physical, whether it's emotional, whether, whatever it is, they don't feel safe in our schools. And so what can we do? You, you shared your next steps with the data honoring, verifying, measuring the gaps, sharing with program services and planning. But is there anything that we can, in the lines of what trustee Agnew was saying about students with disabilities? Is there anything we can do soon?
I'll pass this to Director Klein. Director Klein?
Chair, I would, certainly that is a good question. I think that's, there's, it is kind of like, the more you see the data, the more questions you have, which lead to more questions. I would think for senior team, it would be, part of the, the, the next steps would be to ask those questions and to see what we can do. Certainly, we've already mentioned here a few times that there is an element or backdrop of mental health. And I think the trust, Trustee Boy had mentioned that as well, that despite the fact that there are, I think, an increasing set of resources for students, I think mental health, and we see that in other boards and other areas as well, it's certainly still an issue everywhere. So I would think that part of the answer to that would be for whether we are at senior admin or whether we're teaching in the classroom, is to ask ourselves those questions about what, what can we do to ensure that, that relationship is, is built and strengthened and honored, so that we could meet, meet those needs. I think that's a pretty simple thumbnail begin, beginning to it, but I do think it's incumbent upon all of us to ask those questions.
You have a follow-up question or comment?
I do. Sorry, just to keep going on this, but how do you, I mean, it's a thumbnail, it's a start, but where, how do we measure, not measure it, but how do we, how do we make sure something gets done, instead of just talking about it?
Chair, I think it is a matter of getting things done and also a matter of continuing things that are, are done. Yesterday at CAC, we were talking a bit about Safe Talk and other programs that are in place. I'm looking to senior team here to say of other, other resources or other endeavors that we have to try and meet the needs of staff and students. But that's one that comes off, off the top of my head, is to try and broaden that and strengthen that and to continue that. But I'd be looking to others, see if they have any other thoughts on it as well. But there are, I think, first of all, to understand that, that this board and other boards, particularly over the last three to five years, have moved dramatically in terms of what is in place for students, particularly with regard to mental health. And that's not to say that it's mission accomplished, it's to say that I think we have done, I think that should be important. Can we do better? Yes. And I think as an example of Safe Talk would be, and maybe it's not the best example, but that is one, one activity that I know other boards use and to great success in terms of having staff gain the skills to discern and to understand students and others in terms of maybe their, their more or less worst moments in terms of their own mental health.
Does it answer your question? Yep. Okay, we shall move on down the speakers list to Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think to Dr. Collymore. I noticed the response rate is based on answering only one question, is that correct, both panels? So first part of my question is, how many students went beyond that? Do you, do you have the information on how many students answered two or three?
Dr. Collymore?
So through you. So in order to be included, Zoe, I'm going to start and jump in if, if you, if you can. So in order to be included in our dataset, the student had to have given us express consent. So they had to have said yes, and then the survey continued, and they had to have answered at least one question. If they did answer one question, they were included in the dataset. We do probably have data with respect to how many kids answered each additional item. So the counts are in the report, so each question has a different count number. And so that, that number reflects how many students actually answered that question.
Just a follow-up, I think you may have answered it, if I was to look in the document. But were there any, was there an item that had a significantly higher response rate and diversity, was there one? Or response rate? Or is that in the data that I could?
So, so as I, as we, as we pointed out, so each question, so each chart has its own count. So that denotes how many students and/or parents responded to that question. So yes, the counts will be different between panels and between questions. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So, okay, I got to just narrow it. So it had been mentioned previously with respect to additional follow-ups or additional surveys and what that's going to look like, but mine, mine might be a little bit different. So once we begin to action on these things, I mean, I think there was probably a sense that we were doing, I mean, we do great things. But I think there probably was a sense we're doing a lot better than we are. And we've seen statistically that in some of these populations of students, that's not the case. So once we start to action on some of these initiatives, how are we going to determine the effectiveness of them? So again, using your example of Safe Talk, if Safe Talk was working for all of our students, we wouldn't see the numbers we have. So, excuse me, so if we're going to continue with our existing programs or implement new programs, are we looking to do a temperature check? Are we looking to do something in the meantime? So if we are going to tweak a mental health program, if we are going to implement an additional program, if we are going to follow up on something, are we going to have a mechanism to do a temperature check to see, is that actually working? Are we just going to carry on business as usual, assuming we've, you know, used a program that we think is going to work, and then we find out in five years that it's not working? So is there going to be a mechanism to determine the effectiveness of some of these, some of these initiatives?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll pass this to Director Klein.
Chair, good, very good question. And to go back to something that was said earlier, I think, again, this, this dovetails perfectly with what we're about to embark in, I think, next week, in terms of MYSP. Because a multi-year strategic plan will have within it those goals that are measurable, those goals that are SMART goals, as the acronym goes. And that will allow us to see what we're making inroads in, what maybe we've, don't need to pursue anymore. And so we can be as nimble and as responsive as possible.
So my next question is with respect to staying on top of this. So further to what trustee Powell had said is, you know, how do we ensure that this work is being done in an effective and timely manner, so that we're not just continuously discussing what needs to be done, but we're actually doing things that need to be done? So, you know, when can we expect our first update beyond what's been presented tonight? And is this something that we could add to business arising?
My mic was on. Chair, I would think that this would, again, in terms of next steps and, and feedback loops with, with regard to this, I think then all the trustees are part of the multi-year strategic plan committee, and I think this would be at the core of what we're doing.
No, okay, so Vice Chair, are you asking to add a report as an outcome of this?
No, so what I'm asking for, and respectfully, I understand that this is going to be part of the multi-year strategic plan. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about beyond that plan. When can we expect to see at this board table an update on the work that's being done? So whether it's meeting with the different department heads, whether it's meeting with the different groups that are impacted, whether it's reviewing the existing programs we have in place to reassess those. When can we expect to see, beyond what's been presented tonight, when can we expect to see some sort of update, some sort of movement? And can we add that to the business arising, so that it is top of mind for us to stay on top of this?
So just to understand the question, so asking for a report, Vice Chair, or?
It doesn't have to be a report, it can be a report, I'm not going to dictate to staff how this is brought back. But we're, I don't think we want to sit here and just wait until it comes to us at some point. I'd like to know when we can expect to see realistically some sort of update on the work that's being done in response to this census.
So Director Klein, what's the plan for next steps?
I think it's not unreasonable to give an update for the next meeting of the board.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Up next is Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
I had missed the answer from Dr. Collymore, but just wondering, how many answered, do you, do you know how many survey respondents of the 10,357 answered just one question?
Dr. Collymore?
I don't have that number, I would have to go back and double-check.
Could you email trustees after the meeting?
Just curious.
Certainly.
And, and then in response to that, like, what was the single most popular? If there was only one question, you know, what was that, what was the most popular one question? Just, just curious to know what that was, because there was, how many questions, also, how many questions in total were there for the, for the high school surveys, an example?
Dr. Collymore, you have the information?
So the survey items are located in Appendix B of your package. So there were 10 identity categories, and there was one question per category. Some questions had a follow-up, so for example, the disability question had the disability question, but then it had a follow-up question that asked if, yes, they had a disability. They were then asked to identify or pick how many types of disabilities they had. So each question aligned with one of the data categories, so there were at least 10.
Thank you, Dr. Collymore.
Just a follow-up to that?
Clarification?
Clarification, sorry. So with regard to disabilities, if, if there was, you know, students with disabilities that didn't feel a sense of belonging, was, was there a follow-up question in this survey that dug a little deeper that maybe let them write in why that might be the case? Was it a lack of accommodations? Was it bullying? Was there, like, was there a deeper dive on why they may, may not feel a sense of belonging?
Dr. Collymore?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the belonging question didn't have an open-ended option, but there are other data points or other questions that we asked on the survey. Nick mentioned that we only highlighted three of the questions that were included in the perceptual battery. But there was another question about feeling unwelcome, as an example, that did have an open-ended option for the students to write in. So that data, so I, I will clarify that there, we collected other additional perceptual items, but what we can share with the public is limited. It has to be disaggregated. And so the idea behind the collection, and which was communicated to the respondents, is that this information is really going to be used internally by program services, by the various other departments, to help guide the work that we do to ensure that we are supporting and serving all of the different identities that we have in our school board. So the people that will have access to these, like, the other additional questions will be the people that should be seeing it, because it's part of their role. And that's the guidance from the ARDS data standards, that the data should only be shared with those who need it to do their jobs effectively. And so that's why I talked about next steps in terms of, you know, meeting with the various spec ed departments or the curriculum departments, because those teams will have specific questions and know how to best use the data that we collected to, to better the, the programs and the services that we're offering moving forward.
Thank you. I shall move down the speakers list to Trustee Carabella, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps that just answered my question. I was looking at the, uh, category of, uh, disabilities and wondering if, if that, um, compassing all or were you able to also ask specific, um, categories there? That's sort of what I'm wondering.
Uh, Dr. Collmore?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so thanks for the question. So, so that specific question that you're asking about, um, the template was provided from the Equity Secretariat. So those options that the students and the, and/or the parents saw were, were prescribed. There was an option there that said, um, any disabilities not listed. And then they responded, could have checked that box, and then they were able to fill in, um, that number, what their disability was. So we do have a number of people who did do that, who did submit a response. And again, that's what we talked about, um, sharing those lists with the internal departments so that we can then take a little better look at that and make sense of it.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. You have a follow-up? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, we shall move down speakers list. Trustee Kelly, you're up next.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask in regards to, uh, the fact that elementary was completed by parents and secondary, are they both considered equally or is there any sort of, I guess, way that it's the same?
Dr. Collmore?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question. Um, so the direction that we got with respect to who is going to fill out our survey was provided from the Equity Secretariat. So that direction came directly from the Equity Secretary. Of our kindergartens to grade eight had to fill out the survey on, with or on behalf of their child. Nine to twelve, um, were, were to fill it out, um, the survey on their own. So that was the direction that we followed. Um, and I, I will say that it did change because originally when we piloted this work, um, we were going to have our students fill it out from, from four all the way up until twelve. But like I said, the Equity Secretary did a fraction for anyone who had not yet collected, um, and that we fell into that category.
Trustee Kelly, you have a follow-up?
You'll follow up. Thank you.
Uh, up next is trustee O'Han, uh, Chanara.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just have a comment and, and I have a statement. I want to say thank you with a capital T and a capital Y, if I spelt that correctly. Thank you for doing all this work to reveal our imperfections. I have complete faith in the board of trustees that are sitting at this table and all the staff and all the admin and all the teachers that we will hashtag do better, be better, one step at a time, with a sense of urgency. I just want to add that in there, but thank you for revealing our imperfections. Only then can we be better. So, and this is valuable, meaningful data that you've reiterated a few times tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Han Chanara. And, uh, the last, oh, we have a couple more speakers. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor next. You're up.
I just have a question on cross tabulation. So the cross tabulations were, um, on, on various different identities, but, um, they weren't on ethnic origin, socioeconomic status or first languages. Um, is that because there was not a statistically significant difference in, say, ethnic origin? When you, when you looked at those three questions, was it safety, belonging and is those two for sure?
Dr. Collmore?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to pass this one to Nick.
Yeah, excuse me. So the, um, the issue with those, that there's actually a couple of different issues with it. The socioeconomic ones, I'll take first because, uh, one of the reasons we actually didn't include those is because, um, they didn't hold together as a single measurement. Uh, so the hope was we piloted it at one point in the hope that it would be a cohesive measurement of economic status. Uh, and we found that in the end with the actual survey, they didn't. And so we don't take them as, uh, for the cross tabulations, they weren't meaningful. Uh, for ethnic identity, the numbers of people who had a single response were very small. So the numbers were too small for it to be, um, statistically meaningful in any, any real sense. Um, and there were no, there were no combinations of ethnicities that were more than fifteen. So we have a very diverse board, as you can see with the number of ethnicities there. So the, the combinations were enough to make it statistically significant.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy? Follow-up?
Follow-up with representation. We talked about that, I guess, for future hiring. Um, when we looked at the, the staff survey, I believe it was something like sixty-eight or sixty-nine percent of staff who responded were teachers or principals. Teachers or principals, are they, they're required to be Catholic. Am I right for?
Chair, yes, it is.
Correct. And just the last question, just last thing I want to say, we, there was a little bit about if students are connected to staff or disconnected. The one thing I noticed that, um, looked really positive to me was in the column of acceptance, um, to elementary students who feel accepted by staff was ninety-six point six percent. And for high school students, it was, um, high school students to be accepted by staff, the eighty-seven and a half percent. So combine those two, you're in the ninety-two, ninety-three percent. I think that's pretty important. Um, really haven't said much about staff. I know you had a lot to present, you couldn't get to every little detail. But I think that really just shows how committed and, uh, fantastic our staff are with students that, like that many students feel.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Uh, and with that, I see no other hands up. So we had a good, uh, long discussion. Once again, I want to thank, uh, Jen, Zoe and Nick and Dr. Collmore and all the staff that's involved with this for the wonderful work that's done. It's very complex. I can see that in crunching those numbers. And, uh, so thank you for a job well done. There's lots more work to do and we recognize that. Thank you once again for coming and presenting. Uh, we now move on to the next information item, eleven point four, construction reports. Superintendent Merrick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we have the construction report March. And we have three projects that are in construction right now. Uh, first up on the list is Milton number three, the future St. Kateri School. Uh, so you can see the structure now is out of the ground, which is great. Uh, we are starting on load-bearing walls and underground services. Uh, next month, we continue on with load-bearing walls. Uh, and we should be getting close by the end of April to lifting our first pre-cast, getting the first floor on there as well, uh, near the end of the month. Next up, we have Milton number nine. Uh, foundations on this school are complete now. And again, working on load-bearing walls on this one as well. And you can see the steel columns for the gym starting to be erected in the photos there. Uh, next month, we'll continue on with load-bearing walls and more steel. And then starting the in-wall services with mechanical and electrical services for the school as well. And then lastly, on the third page there, you'll see Oakville number four. Uh, work is really early on, but, uh, just starting to begin on site, uh, with some rough grading. Uh, foundations and footing started this week, and that'll proceed on with masonry throughout the month. And then starting with underground services, uh, and site services on that, uh, on that project as well. So, uh, have you taken any questions that trustees may have for those, uh, those three construction projects?
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick for presenting, uh, the construction report. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Uh, seeing none, I have a question. Superintendent Merrick, how, how are we tracking, uh, schedule-wise for all the three projects?
Uh, it, it's been a pretty good winter for construction, so it's, we're doing well on the schedules for those. Um, I mean, there's still very early days on all of those projects, so, uh, still a lot of ways, a long ways to go on, on all three of those. Um, and, uh, but we are seeing, you know, good weather to help us out, uh, and no supply chain challenges so far. So we're, uh, tracking very well on those projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Uh, thank you for your report. We shall move on to our next order of business, which is, which is miscellaneous information and we do not have anything there. Same with, uh, correspondence and open question period. Uh, Director Klein's not here, but do we have any questions? Open question period? Okay, thank you. We do not have any open question period. Uh, we do not need to go in camera. And, uh, next order of business is resolution regarding absentees. We have all trustees present here today. So we shall move to adjournment and closing prayer. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
I see, uh, trustee Saunders says, Moonboy trustee Saunders looking for a seconder. Trustee Murphy, you have a hand up?
Sure, I'll second.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Uh, we shall now move to closing prayer. Uh, trustee O'Han Chanara, do you like to lead us in the closing prayer?
I would love to. Let us make the sign of our faith. Name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. The dark hours of this night, protect and surround us, Father, Son and Spirit three. Forgive the ill that we have done, forgive the pride that we have shown, forgive the words that have caused harm, that we might sleep peaceably. And rise refreshed to do your will. Through the dark hours of this night, protect and surround us, Father, Son and Spirit three. Name of the Father, Son, Holy.
Thank you for a great meeting. Good night, everyone.